Time being 9:35, I will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Healy.
Here.
Swenson.
Here.
Kettering.
Here.
Clumish.
Here.
Lost.
Here. I guess I skipped the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's step back to item number one and do Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for All right, item number three, would any commissioner have a reason to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
No?
No.
No. All right. Item number four, approval of agenda. Are there any additions or amendments to the agenda?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
This is Dan Clumish. Could I add a discussion on video conferencing and a special, a potential special meeting to approve the IT bid for that? Just as a discussion to let the rest of the commission know and the public know that we're working on trying to get updated video equipment for meetings? It would be just a discussion if that's okay with you?
Yep, that's fine. We'll add it as 6A after, just before a public comment. I would entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve the amended agenda. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Motion carries. Agenda's been approved. All right, item number five, public comment. Would anyone like to come into the room one at a time for public comment?
Am I the only one?
No, we have Louis.
Let the other ones go first.
Louis?
Louis Johnson, following. I have a question. I'm doing the site preparations on Five Hog Barns. The deal I had made with the owners was a down payment.
I can't hear what you're saying.
I'm speaking into the microphone, but anyway, any, at the end of the project, I get the balance. All right, and we've had some of them held up two years now. Am I supposed to go broke?
Can you speak up?
Get a little closer.
I believe he is, but my, you're probably just not picking up the speakers in the room. That's the challenge.
Anyway, and I've got people that I owe money to, and we're just supposed to get screwed until we finally get done in another year or two in court? I wouldn't mind having some income. I had to borrow a bunch of money because I've got income coming, but I can't get it till, because we have a staff work order, so you can't finish. And if that's, if that's the way the county wants to go, and I've had two developers cancel jobs because they said they're sick of Yankton County, out by the lake. And one guy's already got a project going by Beersford. And everybody's worried about the coronavirus, and they should be, it's serious. But that's not the only thing going on. And tourism, I'm just guessing, is going to be down this year. And expenses are going to be up. And there's going to be a lot of people laid off, at least for a while. Why can't we put this behind us and get something done and start going forward again? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment who is standing in the hallway?
I've got one, thank you. We've often heard about the saying, nobody's perfect, and you can't fix stupid. Well, I hope we can. Last Tuesday, when we had our regular commission meeting, we had people spread around, and the commissioners, we were spread apart. And then all of the commissioners, including myself, we did something stupid. We went into the executive session for an hour or so, along with State's Attorney Clumish, the five commissioners, Gary Vetter, and we were all inside a closed room. So we did something stupid. But I hope next time when we have an executive session, we can find a different place to have that, because it was too much of a confined space. And sometimes you're just, you can't see the forest for the trees, so I guess we, all of us overlooked it. But when I walked out that night, I realized that we'd all been too close, so. That's all we got to say, but everybody keep praying that this goes away quick. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will close public comment. Moving on to item number six, which is a very lengthy item to talk about COVID. All right, I think what I'll do is start with, we had a call with the governor yesterday. The, all of the counties across the state were invited to listen to her. We were on the phone with her for almost an hour, I think it was about 50 minutes, before she had to go to another call. What other commissioners were on that call? Did anyone else call in?
Never, never was, no, I thought about it.
I called it late, but I was kind of touch base with Gary regarding some of the things discussed.
Gary, you were on the phone, Gary Vetter. Dan, were you on the phone?
I didn't, Madam Chairman, I didn't know that about it, I guess. I didn't know that we could call in and talk to her about it.
How did, how did you find that?
I don't know when, how that email got out, but for the next time, I'd appreciate it if it gets sent out to all the commissioners.
I sent the email, but it said for the chair.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so some, some updates from that call. We were allowed to essentially ask questions. I did not, because some of the other counties had already asked the questions that I would have asked, so I'm just going to walk through some of the highlights of that. Started out with a couple of counties stating that they were, what they were doing in their buildings and such. Beetle County, at this point, is renting the state fairgrounds to set up emergency medical services, if you will, because they are anticipating potentially their hospital running out of beds. So they did talk to the governor about that, and she assured them that they would not be charged for renting those facilities. Next, they asked, and I, and I believe it was Minnehaha County, had stated that they have been advised they cannot close businesses by, from their attorneys. It was also stated their insurance company would not cover them if they chose to do so. So this is very real discussion, and Governor Noem had said she had been giving essentially the same advice, that it's, how did she put it here? She said she would be opening up South Dakota to liability, and counties essentially have the same exposure. So folks are trying to get very creative to minimize that exposure while still addressing the very real concern we have with folks being together in confined spaces. And if anybody watched the news last night, Mayor Tenhaken has found a little bit different approach for the city of Sioux Falls. They are essentially not banning or closing businesses, I should say. They are taking the step to ensure that certain businesses cannot have more than 10 people in their establishment. And that applies to only certain businesses, and it does not apply to others. So folks are starting to get a little more creative on how to address all the concerns around making decisions at a government level. To move on, the question about remote voting in meetings like this, as we move forward, we will be trying to do more teleconference meetings where there are no commissioners sitting in the room, and there was concern, they wanted to ensure that any votes taken place were legal. So her staff is working on recommendations for every county across the state on that. There was a question about property taxes, and if there would be a movement to delay property taxes, and at this point, that is not being considered. Meeting laws via conferencing, et cetera, and that, the concern here was open meetings laws. And if we are denying folks the ability to come to our meetings because we would have more than 10 in the room, what does that do for open meetings law requirement? And we face that challenge sitting here today. We have asked folks to stand in the hall, all six feet apart, because we cannot have more than 10 people in this room. The other part of that is, during our meeting, often we take public input. If it would be a CUP hearing as such, how do we handle allowing people to continue to express their views on a CUP, but still keep them safe and keep everyone else safe in the room? I believe the governor had said they are working on guidance for that as well. She then went on to discuss that the expectation is that 30% of South Dakotans will get the virus at some point. That's about 265,000 people. And if they all get the virus tomorrow, we're in a pickle of trouble. So again, her message is, we need to try to flatten the curve, and that is why she came out with her guidance of 10 or less people together at any one time, and, and other items that were in her executive order that we will discuss a little bit later. So right now, the projection for South Dakota with the actions we have currently taken is our curve is starting to flatten, whereas before school was canceled, before some of these other actions were taken, our curve was pretty steep, similar to what New York is facing right now with, with their challenges in their healthcare system. So she felt that we were, we were moving in the right direction on that. Moving to the next, I thought there was one more thing. She, she did say they were working on voting and evaluating when we do have the June primary election, if we are in a better state of doing more with absentee voting and such, but they did not have anything firm at that point. And I think there was a question on equalization, because we, coming here in April, we will have a deadline to meet for reviewing property tax evaluations, and they are working on guidance for those meetings as well. Again, the concern is, if someone is challenging their property tax valuation, we need to ensure they still have the ability to do that. But again, I think we'll have probably 11 or 14 people that are supposed to be on the city county joint board and school boards, so that will become a challenge. But please know that the state is working on that, and certainly we're working on that at the county level as well. So any commissioners, do you have any questions of me that maybe you thought should have been asked, and maybe I've just overlooked it, and it was mentioned?
No.
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
This is Dan Clumish. What is the state level of personal protection equipment? I've heard varying degrees. The state stockpile is nearly out, and then, and today in the press in Dakota, they didn't say what the numbers are, they said they were fairly low. Do we have an idea at the state level where we're at on PPE for the hospitals?
That question was not asked during the governor's conference call, and probably the best person to answer that question would be our esteemed OEM.
She did address.
Leader out there.
Governor Noem did have a conference yesterday after.
After that.
That meeting. And I believe that question was asked, I think the answer given was adequate supplies at this time.
Well, I think that's on ventilators, but, but I'm talking M95 masks and gowns and things of that nature. I did see that one you, you mentioned, Joe, and why they, why respirators were addressed, PPE was not, and so I guess that, that would be a question, if you get another opportunity, Madam Chairman, to ask what our supply is.
All right, I'll make a note of that.
Thank you.
I received an email this morning that, that.
Turn your microphone on.
Couldn't be there, and I'll send it out to all of you if you have any questions that weren't asked. So after the meeting, I will send it all out.
Okay, thank you. Just teeing off that question, Dan, I know there's, Alvera and Sanford have started testing facilities, and I think they said there's, they can process 800 tests a day now. I heard this morning that, because I, they're like 200 or 300 tests behind currently, but I believe their projection, by Monday, they will have all the tests off their backlog.
I see, well, in the paper today, Alvera is, hospital is, you know, accepting and asking people to basically sew masks. To me, that means there's probably not a very good supply of those, and almost all of them are made in China, so it's not like we're going to be getting more masks anytime soon. I guess, so that, that's what I was referring to.
Right. I think, I didn't see that, that post, but I do believe that there were questions from citizens, if they, if there's a proper technique or material for making masks at home. I believe that's what that's referring to.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I think I'll have Paul come and give maybe a status update, just general, where we're at and what you know about the state as well.
Okay, good morning. Sorry, routine. Just to give you, I was hearing a conversation. The results from yesterday are actually where they're standing right now, is we have 46 positive, 1,973 negatives, and there's 125 pending at the state, to be tested. This is at the state lab, that doesn't speak for the, there might be some others, you know, Alvera, Sanford, you know, and there's actually two more standing up, sounded like here in the next day or so, I'll be able to really mass produce, like you had said, Joe. As far as Yankton County goes, right now, we have, we have no known cases in Yankton County. We've been taking the proactive measures, there's been a lot of meetings, probably the last week and a half, we have had a daily meeting. We created a task force that's called COVID-19 Task Force, which includes the hospital, medical clinic, a lot of the, like ABS, Alvera Sicker, HSC, just numerous, there's 74 people in the task force. And on an average, day to day, on our conference calls, we see around 40 to 45, 50 people go on something just like this. We don't YouTube it or Facebook it, because we're talking tactics, things that are going on in there. But we started doing, like, yesterday, we had a Facebook Live, kind of giving an update of what's going on. We're going to try to do that every couple, two, three days, so that people kind of know what's going on in the world, within the county anyway, and what people are doing. The task force that we created, we wanted to make sure the hospital is kind of in charge, or the medical world, if you will, because this is their, their realm, if you will. For us in emergency management, we're here to support them, and anybody else that might need something, in the event it gets to where we have a major surge and, and they need assistance. So right now, we're just kind of facilitating, making sure we keep the groups together, communicate to make sure there's nothing else that maybe somebody needs. We heard the PPE question. Yeah, right now, I mean, we've got, there's, there's, I would say, adequate equipment at the time. We've been getting equipment for first responder groups in the county. EMS has been stocking up, you know, for the, the emergency calls, the hospital has got a bunch of stuff, so we've been moving on slowly, getting this stuff in.
Paul, does, does this group, does that serve the county or just the city?
Count, it's the entire county. Yeah, we have the towns, like, right now, we have Lesterville, Utica, we have Gayville, a board member, they all can view in on this meeting via GoMeeting, and like what we're doing now with the questions and answer thing. And so they're, everybody, it isn't just a city thing, I mean.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yes.
Those numbers that you gave at the first part of your statement.
Yep.
Would you go over again? You kind of went over them like an auctioneer, so I didn't even catch them all.
Okay.
If you could read them real slow.
Yeah, you have to give me a second here.
There's 46 positive.
Wait a minute, I had to ask Paul to say it.
There are 46 positive, 1,973 negatives, and there's 125 pending. That means the tests that haven't been run through the system yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
So for those listening, that's doh.st.gov.
Correct.
Has those statistics on there.
Yep. South Dakota Department of Health, their website updates just before noon every day, so they get to, and we, we kind of wait and see. So anyway, with this task force, like I said, we've been working well, working, it's been real well, working with everyone, getting things together, putting things, see what needs to be done. Like I said, we don't have a big role, but yet we want to make sure that in the event something happens, we're ready to hit the ground running. In the event, we need to support the, the medical field within the county, with the hospitals and stuff like that. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I mean, we've, we go, we've been reviewing all of our plans from A to Z in the Emergency Operations Plan to make sure they're covered, and that we're ready to, you know, if something happens, we have guidance. And we're also knowing, like, what the schools are doing, and what Gayville School is doing, you know, getting that information. Are we having a shortage of food in the county? You know, do we need to open up center? I mean, this is all being discussed in these meetings, you know, and so we're ready, though, if that happens, we can pull the trigger, we're ready to hit the ground running and move forward, so.
Madam, Madam Chairman?
Yes?
This is Dan Clumish. I just want to just tell the rest of the commission, I've been on most of these calls, and I know some other commissioners have, and I just want to let the public know what an excellent job our emergency management department has done with Paul and Aaron as well, what they've gone through to organize. They're leaving no stone unturned. There's a tremendous amount of planning and detail going in, just like Paul said, Chamber of Commerce, YAPG, City, People in Nebraska, HSC, ABS, United Way, all working together. And, and a lot of that, well, most of that is due to Paul, and I just want to say, in a public meeting, thank you, Paul and our emergency management department for that.
Oh, thank you. So I, I guess, is there any other questions with the, the COVID-19 stuff? I could talk all day, but I don't want to. The only last thing I would like to do, just real quickly, make sure you have your overshoes out this weekend. The National Weather Service, does that put us in, in a flood watch until Sunday? We've been getting phone calls this morning already, is the sandbag station still open up at the county highway shop? And it is. And I will have to make sure that there's enough bags there to get us through the weekend. But their National Weather Service is forecasting, I read, to possibly see one to three inches of rain in the next couple of days, so keep that in mind. We've been preparing everybody all year long about be prepared, you know, if you need sandbags, go make them, if you need to look at how to dike your basement windows, stuff like that, now's the time to do it before the rain starts, but I thought I better throw that out while we're here. I just love the weather, so. Anything else?
No, thank you.
You shouldn't have said that, weren't you?
Yeah, yes. One thing I do want to make, for those that are out listening out there, we had a little hiccup with Facebook, and so we're actually streaming, I can't say, Gary, you're streaming on the counties now, but if you see me up here earlier with my tablet, that's the county emergency management's Facebook page, so we could get you up and running right away. There was an issue with the camera. So we're telling people, I got Valley and a few others, you know, posted saying, go to here, but, so you're seeing it in both places.
Oh.
So at this time, because we wanted to make sure you guys were being heard and seen.
Thank you.
Sure.
But I want to make sure people, if they heard that, they know where to go. All right, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. I think next, we should, I would like to move to HR 6201, which is the Families' First Coronavirus Act. It's the second omnibus bill that was passed. And in there, it covers employ, employers with less than 500 employees and the allocation of two weeks of emergency leave. We've been kind of discussing it, on Wednesday morning, we had a meeting with our teams, team department heads here in the building, talking about how that bill affects the county. Also in the bill is emergency family leave for employees who do not have childcare, because their child is not in school and their daycare provider is not available. So the bill applies to us, so I don't believe we need to take any formal action to say we're going to follow the bill, because by law, we have to. But the thing in that bill that concerns me is there is an exemption for medical providers and emergency responders. The bill does not apply to them. And we have a very large emergency medical services department, which I feel that we need to treat the same as we treat our other employees. So I do believe we, we need to, if we want to include them, I do believe we probably need to make a motion that we're going to take that stance, so that those employees have the comfort of knowing for sure how they are going to be treated. The last part of that bill that we have been unsuccessful in changing so far is that if you are a private employer, you will be reimbursed for those additional costs, costs through tax credits. Public employers will not. So this additional expense will be burdened by the county. And that is how the law is written. The National Association did their best to get an amendment to Bill Number Three that just got passed by the Senate. It is being heard by the House of Representatives today, so there is still time to amend that bill to include public entities to be tax credit eligible, but the likelihood of that happening probably is low.
Sure, how others that affect manpower? And that's impossible to probably answer, but.
It is, and.
That would be my first concern.
Yep, and I think that's probably why the first bill exempted medical, the medical field from that, is they, they wanted to ensure that those folks essentially had to come to work.
Critical staffing.
Critical staffing, had to come to work. If they've got COVID, obviously, they wouldn't come to work, they'd be banned from coming to work, but childcare, et cetera, or caring for a spouse who has COVID, something like that. I believe they felt they couldn't sacrifice the people. So that is a concern, certainly, and we discussed at our team meeting on Wednesday morning, and asked each department leader to have a plan in place if they get a COVID positive on their team. Because if they get a COVID positive, most likely, everybody they work with has been exposed. So they need to have a plan in place for how their office could function if we essentially have to close a pod of people in our building. So for example, I'm going to pick on Patty, because she's here. If one of your staff members would get sick with COVID, most likely, you've all been exposed. How can Patty's office function for a couple of weeks while everyone's in isolation, et cetera? So they've been tasked with doing that. So the question again is, how do we want to choose to treat our emergency medical staff?
You know, I, I get the sense that our emergency medical staff puts themselves in, in these positions with communicable diseases and other, you know, potential health. harmful effects, day in and day out. And, and, you know, they're, they're kind of the doctors and the nurses arena, and, and they know the risks, they know what they're putting themselves through and the potentials. So that being said, I guess, I don't see it, I don't see them abusing it in any way, and I don't see them utilizing it unless it's absolutely necessary. And, and my thought is, if it's necessary, I've got small children and, you know, a spouse who, you know, potentially could be exposed. And, and, you know, if I put myself in their shoes, I, I think that, that, that the emergency FMLA offered, everybody else should be offered to them.
Other comments?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
This is Dan Clemish calling in. I would agree with what Commissioner Healy said. And are we only discussing about FMLA now? Are we talking about county operations in general? Is this a discussion or?
With this, it pertains strictly to HR 6201.
Okay. I would, I would support what Commissioner Healy has said, is we gotta, we gotta take care of our employees.
Other comments? All right. Well, I would, I do, I feel strongly, we need a motion to make sure those folks understand that this is, this is how we will be treating them, as far as the Families First Act goes.
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second to include our emergency medical staff as part of the Families First Coronavirus Act. Further discussion?
Madam Chairman, I guess, why, why would they not be included anyway, I guess?
Because that was specifically outlined in the bill. If you go to the bill and read it, they are specifically exempted from the bill.
The medical responders?
All medical associated personnel. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it did. Was there any other exemptions for, say, police or jail workers or anything like that? Or was it specifically just medical personnel?
Medical personnel.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? So since you are on the phone, Dan, I think what we'll do today is do roll call votes for all votes that we take, so that, that whoever's listening on Facebook Live is, is sure to understand what the vote is. So Patty, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Kettering?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Most?
Yes. Motion passes. All right. So the next one will lead into what Dan's question was on closing buildings and the current operations of county centers, I guess if you will. We've got several buildings across our county where our workers reside. So again, I'm going to refer back to our, the meetings we've been having with our staff. The last was Wednesday morning. And the question was posed, is what we are currently doing working, is it acceptable, or do we need to step up security to the next level? And the consensus of all of the department heads was that what is happening right now, they feel, is protecting their employees. The Plexiglas has its challenges with hearing a little bit, but they do feel that it is protecting them from the aerosol vapors if you are speaking with someone. As far as the offices that have doors, my understanding is traffic has slowed there. They have the barriers out in front, and they are doing their best to do much of the work via phone if they can. So as of Wednesday, our decision was to continue operations as current. So operations in the main government center here would be, we're still requiring folks to do much of their stuff by mail or online. For example, paying property taxes or getting license plate renewals. If they show up at the building, they are asked to put their information in the drop box. They are not taking that transaction across the counter. The jail certainly is on heightened lockdown because we have an isolated population. There was already, Pierre is, is dealing with a COVID case in their women's prison right now. And I feel very confident in our sheriff's ability to keep his prisoners safe and his staff safe. So they are taking temperatures and not allowing folks in the building who do not need to be in the building. At this time, the highway department has locked their front door. Traffic to that building is minimal as it is, but they have taken the step to lock their front door. They have adjusted their break room and actually put tables out in an open area to encourage the social distancing of six feet. They're wiping down equipment, et cetera, to, to keep that, that team safe from the spread of COVID. Joe, do you want to add anything in from our?
Yeah, there's one thing I do want to address out of the discussions. Part of it is, is the Wednesday meeting, just so others are aware, we, we will be holding weekly meetings with our department heads. And if things drastically change, we will call meetings sooner. So we'll, you know, try to stay on top and address any concerns there. What we have encouraged departments that have the ability to do is to have one or two individuals work from home, if possible, in a kind of a rotating shift, so we do not have a full staff working every day. Now, that brings up the possibility that there are departments that don't have the ability to work from home. And so what do those departments do? And how we kind of left is that we need to have that discussion here. My thought is, at this time, it's probably not an imminent threat. But should that change, I feel, I feel it would be wise for the county to pay an employee to stay home for a day in the long run, and continue that rotating shift. Because paying somebody to stay home for a day is a lot cheaper and a lot more cost effective than having an entire department potentially have to close. There are some departments that probably could close and the county would operate. But, you know, I think Brian Hunoff made a good point, register of deeds. If, if that department were to close for two weeks or longer, real estate transactions stop in the county. People go to them for marriage licenses, and there's probably work around there, but birth certificates and things of that nature. And so, I, I think we need to have that discussion or consider what's in the best interest of not just our employees, but the, the county in general. And
Madam, Madam Chairman?
Are, are you done?
Go ahead, yes.
Okay, go ahead, Dan.
I, I have to agree with Joe. And from, from my discussions with employees and department heads, it seems like we've, we've got a big dip in, in, there's a lot fewer transactions happening, a lot fewer people coming to the government center, which is good. So I, I would, I would propose that we look at modifying the schedule. I feel that having employees come and sit here all day with, with few things to do, what's the point of having them here instead of being here? It's a, this is a discussion, you know, maybe a, maybe a ten to two or ten to three type schedule would be better. And the reason I say that is because we have to look at sustained operations. This is probably going to go on for months. There's a lot of stress going on. There's a lot of stress with people's families. There's kids that are now doing schoolwork at home. I guess I don't see, and this might not apply to every department, but certainly it will apply to some, that a, a possibility of a modified work schedule should be looked at. And that could be reduced, either reduced hours every day, or a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or something to that effect. And I guess if we're discussing that, that would be my proposal.
You know, my, my immediate concern with something like that, just something to think about is, we would be concentrating the, the flow of traffic to certain days and to shorter hours. And, and do we want to increase the number of people in this building at one time? And, you know, one way to kind of do a combination of the, of the two is, is if we remained open during normal hours, but the, the employees in each department were rotating out either every other day or even half-days. It might relieve some of the, the other burdens and potentials that you discussed. And it's, it is going to be difficult.
That's, that's a good point. But, but, you know, also, on the other hand, if we're only open like a Monday, Wednesday, Friday rotation, that allows for, you know, deep cleaning on the days we're not open. So, so there's, there's positive benefits for both.
Right.
But I agree with your point. My primary focus is we need to take care of our employees, and we need to realize that our employees and their families are under extreme amount of stress. And I know from my experience of sustained combat operations, you can only run like this for so long. And then you're going to start dealing with problems. So we can go ahead and push these guys, but sooner or later, some people are going to break. And then that's going to cost us. So we need to realize that this is going to be a two or three-month ordeal. We are going to have to change the way we do business.
And, and that point was made clear at our team meeting, that I would even go so far as to say through the end of the year, because this virus is going to cycle several times. China is seeing a resurgence already. So, so any decisions we make need to be focused on being able to operate in that fashion for a sustained period of time. What I would prefer to do is to leave the brunt of the decision to the team leaders. And in that, in that scenario, I guess I, I would ask that, since Joe and I meet with them every week, that we be given some latitude to make that final decision with our department heads. Because they have been asked to make a plan for their team and how they would handle that going forward. So I, I think for us to sit here and make a final decision to say, well, we're, we're just going to be open Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I think leaves a good portion of the important input out of the decision.
And I would agree with that. And we kind of discussed that. If, I think we would ask for the latitude to maybe make some of those operating decisions in concurrence with the, the department heads. I think, for me, the intent of the discussion today is kind of what, what the direction and feeling is of the, of this board, and give us some guidance and latitude perhaps. But, you know, right now, the feedback we're getting from department heads, and, and I feel personally, that we've put the, the correct safeguards in place for the environment we're in today. That can change quickly. And we either need to have a plan in place, or we need to be, be able to work with our department heads to, to make fluid decisions as our environment evolves.
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Dan Clemish again. I would agree with that, is we need to empower our department heads to, to make those, those decisions. And I have no problem with you and Commissioner Healy and Commissioner Most doing what you feel is necessary. I guess my guidance is, is that we need to realize the, the stress that is being placed on our employees. And, and we need to somehow do what we can to unburden them. I guess my, my feeling is that we shouldn't keep people at work eight hours, you know, seven, eight hours a day just because they should be there. If the flow for that office dictates, you know, reduced hours with the same amount of efficiency, I, that would be my recommendation. Because the bottom line is, we have excellent employees, and we need to take care of those employees and their families in, in this difficult time.
Done.
I, I agree that we need to pay attention to the health and welfare of our employees and support that. I also say that each of our department heads has essential functions that absolutely have to be done. For example, we're going into tax season. I guess we don't want to see hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes not being processed and, and properly taken care of, not being, letters not being sent out, et cetera. So I think the department heads have to prioritize essential and non-essential functions and, and address how they're going to take care of the essential functions. And take care of their people.
Yep. And I, I agree. We, this thing is, we're going to be dealing with this for quite a period of time. And we need to stay functional and operational. And, and, you know, Dan, I, I don't discredit the, the stress that our employees are put in. And that's where hopefully we can work out a rotating schedule or do something to, to that effect. You know, one thing to consider, if, if traffic is slow, there's always something to do. There's always these odds and ends that you've always been wanting to catch up on, organization. And I can't stress enough, cleaning. And Jeff and Nate in this building in particular, but our entire staff has done a, a great job keeping up. There's nothing saying that any employee can't pick up a, a rag and a bottle of Lysol. And so, you know, I would expect within their office. But, you know, we, we need to protect ourselves. And, and I guess the point is that, that there's always something to do.
I guess I'd just like to add that, if I remember correctly, the oath that all of us commissioners took was for the safety of the people and the property of Yankton County. And the people, the word people comes first, over land, livestock, whatever, people are the first on.
Yep. So, so if it's okay with, I mean, I think we will continue to work closely with, with departments and, and utilize, you know, utilize their feedback in decision-making.
Do we need a formal delegation of authority to do some of those things?
Well, Sherry, you mean to authorize like unpaid time and stuff? Then my answer would be yes. If it's, let's make a plan, and then we'll talk about it later, then you wouldn't. But if it's, if we want to give you that power, you know, to either restrict time, restrict days, allow payment, then I would, yes.
Okay. So if we, if we want to take that step and delegate the authority to the chair and the vice chair to do what Rob just stated, we need a motion.
Ed move.
You'd move? All right. I have a, I have a motion to delegate authority to the chair and vice chair to make decisions on building closures, staffing levels, and payment.
Compensation.
Compensation, thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have, I have a motion in a second to delegate authority to the chair and the vice chair. Further discussion?
Madam Chairman, Dan Clemish, with this new authority, I guess I would ask that you weekly update the commission that you weekly update the commission via email on what's going on and what's happening. I know you've been having a lot of meetings, but at times it feels like you're maybe not keeping the rest of the commission informed about those decisions. And I know that's difficult to do when things are changing fast, day by day. But when you're doing these things, we need to let all of us five commissioners, we've got to all be on the same page. And so I would ask for a weekly email, or maybe even bi-weekly email, about when these changes take place and what's happening. Thank you.
Yep, and to date, I've been doing my best to actually call commissioners in person to explain more reasoning. Sometimes emails are, can be misinterpreted. So I do my best as well to call. I feel I want feedback from some of the decisions as well. So look forward to those calls.
I'd like to also add that-
Generally don't work for me during the day. So I guess I would like an email, then I can read it at night when I have time. So I'd ask for an email, please.
And you've been texting me, and that works good.
Yep.
Email, you can't always read them. But the other thing is this meeting that you, this conference call with the governor, I would really like to have been in on that. So if you can keep us informed of all that stuff, I know that you maybe forgot about it, but I would have really liked to have been on that conference call with her. So, thank you so much.
Yep, and Gary, to your point, I did not realize not everybody was invited, so.
Yeah.
Any email from now on, then I'll send it to everyone.
Yeah, I know she can't, you know, do it directly, but to one of us she can.
Okay, so, all right. So we have a motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Kettering?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Clement?
Yes.
Swenson?
Yes.
Loos?
Yes. Motion passes. All right, so that was, those were all the notes under the general COVID-19 discussion that I had. Before we move to looking at the resolutions that have been passed, are there other topics we should discuss surrounding COVID-19?
Madam Chairman, at what point are we going to change the operations at the building? Are we waiting until there's a confirmed case in Yankton? Are we waiting until there's a confirmed case in, as one of the county employees? Are we waiting until there's a confirmed case in the building? I guess at what point does our operations change into something else? Like, what's the trigger point for that?
You want to take that or me?
I can. You know, I've been thinking about that too, Dan. What would be the trigger point? And it's hard to draw a line and say, this is it. I think we need to just utilize what the feedback from the department heads are, utilize our knowledge and the conversations going on in the COVID task force meetings. You know, I think if we draw a hard line, okay, there's one case in Yankton, we shut down type of deal. We don't know the details of that. It could have been a traveling thing. It could have been, you know, just, I don't know, you know, what details would be. But I guess the point is, I think with enough people and conversations involved, I think that decision can be made without predefining this is the line.
Yep, certainly there are triggers. The first case in Yankton County will be a trigger. First case in our building is a big step up, etc. So certainly agree with Joe, and we've had that discussion in our team meetings, and everyone is thinking about it, but certainly as soon as the first case is officially announced in Yankton County, we will certainly reconvene and visit with our department heads on taking further action as they see necessary as well. It's, like I told them in the meeting, I don't work in this building, they work in this building, they see it every day. For me to make a blanket decision for them, I think is disregarding the viewpoint that they have. So I go back to, team meetings are extremely important for the input there. And anything else on COVID-19 in general before we move on?
You know, one other thing I'd like to say is, you know, these test results that we're putting so much weight into, you know, the reality is very, very few people are even getting tested. I know three or four people who traveled to Kansas and California and New York and have symptoms, and they call in, and they're not even getting tested. So to think that in Yankton County, we don't have a case, is probably a little too optimistic. We don't have a test confirming we have a case yet. But in all reality, I think we need to act like we do and talk to some other commissioners, like the chairman of the Beadle County Commission. They went from very few cases to very many really quick. And so I feel it's essential and it's important that we have a plan in place for when this event does happen, because it will.
Yep, and right now, we are operating under the impression that the virus is in Yankton County. If we did not feel it was in Yankton County, we would not have Plexiglas in place, we would not be limiting access to our buildings. So we are running under the impression that we have a case in Yankton County. But the difference is, when it's publicly confirmed with a positive, that changes how folks look at things from a grander perspective. So please don't think that we don't think it's here, because we do, and that's why we've taken the actions we have.
Madam Chairman, there's a lot of ways you can die. You can die from starvation, and you can die from many, many ways. So this all has to have a balance to it. One case in Yankton County, to me, there's 1/100 of the chance that that person might die, if you look at the data. If we stop doing all business, stop taking care of all people's salaries and so, the federal government is only going to be able to send out so many of those checks. We've got to continue to do business. And that's part of our, not just taking the health and welfare, it's also we've got to do business as a county.
And I would agree. I, you know, to reiterate on Sherry's point, we do, I assume it's in the community. And people need to act appropriately and act responsibly and abide by the CDC's guidelines on how to operate and how to behave. And with some of the provisions we've taken just in this building, I don't, I'm not going to say I guarantee it, but I feel that if one of our staff were to be infected, it's probably a likelihood it did not happen here. And so as long as we have the right provisions in place, I think that's going to be key to continuing operation into July, into next fall, potentially the next year, as this thing comes and goes. And, you know, we've talked long-term solutions for the county in operations. You know, this will pass at some point, but something else will come along. A very bad flu season will come along. A bad cold will come along. And we need to change our mindset, how we operate within departments, to ensure that an entire department doesn't get sick with the flu, just the common flu. Because that could shut a department down for a week or two. So I think the point is, we need to look at this long-term or think about it long-term and how we may change. And it's things like the Plexiglas, that might be a permanent thing. Hopefully, we'll do a, I think Jeff did an amazing job, but if this is a permanent thing, you know, it would be fashioned out of metal frame and the correct glass and look at HVAC and some of those things. But I think you're absolutely correct, Don. I mean, one case doesn't mean we shut the county down. To me, I'd be looking for rampant spread.
Madam Chairman, this is Dan again. How are we doing on supplies in the county of hand sanitizer and wipes and things like that? Are we able to get resupplied with, say, you know, Clorox wipes and hand sanitizer?
So I'm getting the head nodding up and down from our emergency manager that, yes, we are.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, and just to close this conversation out on the radio on the way in, and it was hinted, I think last night on the evening news, that our president is working with the counties or focusing on counties across our nation to prioritize them as three different categories of risks. And he will be coming out with a focus that counties who are at low risk, that they focus on getting the economy going again. And I'm, it's good, I'm not saying it's bad. It's a piece of information that will be coming our way. And I have a feeling the state of South Dakota will probably be in that low risk, just because our population density is low. So I'm forecasting that's going to happen. And so certainly, we will be asked how we are going to meet his expectation, yet still balance our concerns that this virus is very real for us, even though from Washington, we may be viewed a little different because we are flyover country. So there's going to be some competing interest there that we, as a commission, must balance. And our governor herself will have to balance as well. So again, it's just a piece of information that is coming on a very fluid daily basis, sometimes hourly, especially from our president. So with that, yes, Gary?
Are you finished?
Yeah, go ahead.
Because you brought the president up, that meeting that I went to in DC last year that I was invited to from the White House, I've been on several conference calls with DC this week. This goes through the Office of the Intergovernmental Affairs, and when I went out there, I made a lot of connections. I get daily, almost daily now, emails from DC, from the Office of Intergovernmental Affairs, and I try to send those out on all my Facebook. I send them to Yankton Buzz, and I send out a lot of emails to the people that I know. And anyway, I'm glad I went there. I also got connections now with Joni Ernst, Senator from Iowa. And I also just got this this morning from the governor of Iowa, and I know that this is a different state, but I'm going to read this, verbatim. Governor Reynolds, Iowa cities and counties do not have authority to issue shelter-at-home orders. I don't know, that's Iowa, but just something, food for thought here. But I'm really glad now that I went out to DC. And like I said, I've been sending this stuff out, email, Facebook, Yankton Buzz, and if anybody wants to get on my page, I send a lot to the news media, too. Jerry, you get my stuff, and PND gets it, too. And I try to send as much as I can. Information is, knowledge is power, so. And we need it with this situation going on. Thank you.
All right, are we good with moving on? Next item under number six is the state resolution pertaining to COVID-19. I'm not sure if I actually really need to read this. I think I'm going to maybe cover some of the highlights of it. And the governor put this out earlier this week as an executive order. So every South Dakotan should review and practice CDC hygiene, know the signs and symptoms, understand that those who are vulnerable to COVID-19, including over age 60, should take extra precautions. Implement social distancing. And the CDC is six feet for, it's a certain time period, but it for-
Five minutes.
For five minutes you need to stay away from. Assist those who work in essential jobs, such as emergency personnel. All employers, both for-profit and not-for-profit within South Dakota, implement CDC hygiene practices. Understand that the COVID-19 is not a short-term challenge, and operations will need to endure a difficult and limited social environment for potentially eight weeks or more. Innovate and continue to demonstrate entrepreneurial excellence in their operations. Encourage staff to telework if possible. Implement social distancing measures while they are at work. Limit unnecessary work gatherings. Limit non-essential travel. Consider regular health checks. Offer, to the extent possible, special shopping times or access periods for populations who are vulnerable. The next section is any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings. Suspend or modify business practices as recommended by CDC guidance. That involve 10 or more people to be in an enclosed space where physical separation of at least 60 is not possible. Continue offering or consider offering business models that do not involve public gatherings, including takeout, drive-through, curbside, etc. Consider business arrangements and innovative ideas intended to support the critical infrastructure sectors as defined by the Department of Homeland Security. For the purposes here, enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings means any enclosed facility operating as a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casino, coffee shop, recreation or athletic facility, health club or entertainment venue. She then outlines guidance for all healthcare organizations. Implement or continue CDC guidance. Postpone elective surgeries. Implement hygiene practices recommended by CDC. Restrict public gatherings. Review the business practices of each enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings in their community for compliance with this executive order. Encourage entrepreneurial innovation in the private sector to provide employment opportunities to protect the continued operation of the free market consistent with recommended CDC hygiene practices. Protect the critical infrastructure sectors as defined by the Department of Homeland Security, such as healthcare services, pharmaceutical, food supplies, as these sectors have a specific responsibility to maintain their normal work structure. So, and there is, there is a document, I think it's like 14 pages, the Department of Homeland Security outlines what is considered a critical business. So this order is based on developing facts and may be rescinded or amended, shall expire by May 2, 2020. And it took effect March 19. So that is essentially what the governor came out with. And I would like to have a discussion on this, whether we want to actually feel we need to come out and make a formal stance that we're in support of it, or if we just feel discussing it in public is sufficient. So I will open it up for conversation.
I have something from a South Dakotan. His name is Frank James, and I'd like to read it, verbatim. Frank James, "As I read Governor Noem's executive order, apparently counties and local government should choose the right path for this pandemic. Funny they should handle an international crisis, but not the zoning of CAFOs and industrial facilities." Unquote, Frank James. Thank you.
Well, I think this, Governor Noem gave direction to the citizens of the state. I do hope people are taking this serious. It is, you know, Don, I know you mentioned that people die many ways, and they certainly do, but when it's absolutely preventable, I hope people do take this to heart and they change their day-to-day practices. I guess I would go to the last section that applies to all local and municipal governments within the state- within the state of South Dakota should. And that's where it covers reviewing business practices and encouraging those businesses within the county to follow these guidelines and the CDC guidelines. And that's probably mostly why we're here today, to discuss what our plans are, what our actions may be, and what our message is going to be.
So, we hear from the CDC, the president, the vice president, our governor, almost on a daily basis, and they all have the same message. How can we not support it?
I agree.
To me, Madam Chairman, to me, you know, I guess like a lot of people, I was disappointed that our governor really let us down and failed to act. But this seemed to me more like an executive suggestion than an order. I mean, we should do a lot of things, but it's ultimately just like Commissioner Healy said, the governor will not act. It is up to us as a city or a county to do something, because our governor refuses to do so. Many governors across our nation have acted, but that's not going to happen here in South Dakota. I support everything that's in there, but I guess I don't know if it's strong enough. And talking to a lot of other communities and other counties where this has happened, many in the state have now chosen to do resolutions of their own or ordinance of their own as well.
And by many, could you give us a list?
Beedle, Huron, Vermillion, Yankton, Watertown, Minnehaha is going to do an ordinance or resolution sometime today, as well as the city of Sioux Falls. And I think the most important one is our city of Yankton. The vast majority of our population in Yankton County, and I know that's the next one coming down, has chosen to pass a resolution pertaining to COVID-19. And I know that's the next one down there, but that's pretty significant for Yankton County. And I feel we need to look closely at what the city has done.
And did you read the Sioux Falls proposal?
Minnehaha or the Sioux Falls one?
The Sioux Falls.
When was that, maybe beneficial yet, or are they still reading it?
They, I believe they approved it yesterday. I don't know if they have a waiting period or not.
Don't they have to have a second reading of that? So, I mean, it could potentially change.
Okay, because they chose not to implement a ban, they chose to implement the 10-person limitation.
I'd have to concur with Commissioner Klumisch on what he just said, but somebody's got to take the bull by the horns here, because our governor is, I don't want to make a comment about it.
Madam Chairman, may I suggest we move to the city resolution? I think these conversations are probably going to be one and the same.
Yep.
If we review what the city did, and then I think open up discussions regarding-
Okay.
Both, I guess.
Let's see. This is city. Do we need to walk through what, this whole thing?
I don't think so. I guess-
You want to just hit the highlights, then?
I think so.
What are you, what are you going to walk through?
What the city of Yankton did.
Okay. Can I have a copy of that?
Yep.
It was in your packets?
Yeah, it's in here. Would you like me to?
Yeah, go ahead. Just hit the highlights.
Yeah, I'm going to just give the gist of it and hit the highlights. So, effective 12:00 AM on Thursday, March 26, all restaurants, coffee houses, bars, breweries, dance clubs, gentlemen clubs, cafes, and other similar places of public accommodation, offering food and beverage for onsite consumption, including any alcohol licenses with on-sale privileges, are closed to onsite, on-sale patrons. They may operate takeout, curbside, et cetera. Recreation facilities, pools, health, fitness facilities, clubs, social clubs, fraternal organizations, athletic and weight training facilities, barber shops, movie and live production theaters, event centers, meeting halls, and music and entertainment venues are direct to close and cease operations. This is effective through May 1, 2020. Tobacco shops, lounges, baking shops, smoking lounges, onsite consumption, et cetera, shall be closed effective through May 1, 2020. Pool halls, video game arcades, video lottery, casino operations, bowling alleys, indoor skating rinks, and similar shall be directed to close and cease operations through May 1. And then it, paragraph 5 outlines essential businesses. They don't define that, but they call, talk about places that this does not apply to. So, food and beverage for offsite consumption, grocery stores, retail stores that offer food, convenience stores, pharmacies, et cetera, room service in hotels, healthcare facilities, crisis shelters, homeless shelters, churches, soup kitchens, emergency facility for response, outdoor recreational facility where safe distances between patrons may be maintained, i.e. golf courses. Daycare providers and similar businesses would not be affected by this closure. And then they also go on to talk about communal gathering definition. I think that's the-
Madam Chairman, to address Commissioner Healy, I believe daycare facilities, as long as they're under 10 kids and adult, 10 total people are also exempt, from what I have heard from the city.
Sure. And Patty made a good point. The city election will be suspended for the time being, and that will be, when is the primaries?
June 2.
June 2, as of now, that's the plan for the city election.
Or June 7, I'm sorry.
June 7. So, just to, you know, have that out there, the, this is what the city of Yankton did. It's not countywide, but it's certainly part of our discussion today.
It is June 2, Chairman.
June 2, okay. Election will be June 2, as of today.
And I will need a motion to approve the city having, combining with the June primary-
Oh, sure.
When you get that discussed.
Okay.
Can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
It's with the city resolution.
Okay. It's, I think that's all right. State Attorney, Klumisch?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it, yes.
All right. In that case, I would move approval of allowing the city to have an election in conjunction with the county, with the June 2 primary?
Correct.
I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow the city to join the June election. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I should have done roll call. All oppose nay. Motion carries. No one, everyone voted for it. Sorry about that habit.
Madam Chairman, in addition with that, I just would like to say, I think that's a really good idea, the city and county to host a joint election, and I'm glad we were able to assist the city in that.
All right. Further discussion on the resolutions by the state or the city?
Yeah, I guess what I feel is listening to the meetings and talking with Mayor Johnson is the city of Yankton felt it's absolutely essential to pass this resolution to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Yankton, which are citizens of Yankton County. Their one apprehension is, is that this only does cover the city of Yankton. It doesn't cover the lake area that has approximately 5,000 people. It doesn't cover our small towns. It doesn't cover our rural areas. And in my opinion, I think the city of Yankton showed great leadership and resolve by putting through this resolution. And I feel that as a county commissioner, that we need to support the city's actions on what they've done. It wasn't an easy choice. None of us wanted to be a county commissioner to close down businesses. This is difficult. We can make excuses why we can't do this or can't do that. And this is a choice that none of us thought we would ever have to make. I wish there was an alternative, but I don't think there is. You know, we look to our governor for action, but she refused to act and place the responsibilities on local governments. We have no choice but to act. We must support the city of Yankton by setting up a Board of Health. I realize it's difficult for our citizens and our business owners in this global pandemic. I understand. Today is my daughter's fifth birthday party, or birthday, and we were going to have a party for her, but we can't now. And she came up to me this morning, and she promised, did she be a good girl, if she could just have her friends over, and she promised me that she wouldn't get sick. And I had to explain to her why we can't do that. And that's heartbreaking as a parent, and that's heartbreaking as a father to do that. But we have to act here today. If we don't have the strength to do what's right for Yankton County, we will be filling body bags. Look at New York, look at Italy, and look at California. Their morgues are full. If we fail to act right now, we will be responsible for more deaths. We have to take decisive action here. We all pledged an oath of loyalty to protect Yankton County, and I will not break that oath today. So, Madam Chairman, I make a motion to set up a county Board of Health in accordance with South Dakota Code of Bylaw 34-16-22, in order to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Yankton County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set up a Board of Health 34-16-22. Further discussion?
I'd like to maybe open discussions on what direction we plan or intend to head with this county Board of Health prior to taking vote on it. I guess my thought is, there's different ways to skin a cat. And I'm not saying that I'm absolutely against the Board of Health, but I would like to know some details of how we're going to implement it, how we potentially will dissolve it, or disband it, or if we plan to keep it, what their authority is, who would sit on it, those types of things, before making a decision. And I guess ultimately, I would like to see where does the board feel we would like to go as a county as far as restrictions, and discuss some options here.
I appreciate your concern about that, Commissioner Healy, but two months ago, we didn't know of anything about this virus, not very much of it, anyway. There's too many unknowns to start putting restrictions on something that we're just going to vote on right away, and try to implement a county Board of Health. We start putting restrictions on it before we even get it implemented, something comes up down the road. You know, we've had two earthquakes in Yankton over the last 40 years, just small ones. We don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, next week. So, if we start putting limitations on it before we ever get there, we can always pull back on some of the restrictions or whatever. But I don't agree with you for putting restrictions on things right away.
I don't agree with Mr. Swenson's opinion on this at all. I think Joe's comments about having some knowledge about what it controls and what it does. For example, we've got a task force of people, 70 people on that task force. How would you get a better group of people in a county Board of Health than that? Now, maybe there needs to be something done to regulate the gathering points in the outlying communities that Yankton doesn't, Yankton City doesn't cover. I won't disagree with that. I think probably some of those owners would go along with the governor and the city's recommendation. But just to come in and develop a new government board, and what regulatory, what enforcement, what, we have no idea. And that, in my opinion, would be very irresponsible.
So, you know, maybe I can clarify a little, too, for Dan and Gary, why I guess I'm hesitant or questioning, or would like to know more. If the intention of, if the intention of setting up the county health board is simply to, as a regulatory body, to implement some of these either closures or best management practices or CDC guidelines, I question if setting up a county Board of Health even offers that authority. So, if, that's why I guess I'd like to discuss what, where we would like to go as a commission first, and then choose the vehicle to get there. I certainly think, I certainly think, if you simply look at the numbers of this disease and the unknowns about it out there, it is something to take serious. And I think the majority of people have, I really do. I've been calling some of the small towns and some of the establishments that are outside of city limits, and the majority of them feel the same way, that this is a serious concern. And some are closing voluntarily, some are implementing actions. And I think we've probably all got the same calls and emails or discussions. There's likely one or maybe two that are really highlighted as being concerns. And I do feel that we need to address that. I do feel we need to step in, if that's the right word, and take some action. But again, I'd like to know where we all stand, what, I would like to generate a plan or an agreeance on what we feel is our duty, and then let's choose the vehicle to do that. Because I'm not convinced that another governing body is the best route, or if that governing body truly has the authority- the authority to, to do what we would want it to do.
Madam Chairman, this is Commissioner Clemish. If you look at Beadle County and Huron County and Sioux Falls and Minnehaha and our own town of Yankton, all set up boards of health. I'm not a medical professional, and nobody on the county commission board is. We need a doctor to advise us and make these decisions. I feel that's imperative. I brought this up 10 days ago, and, and we didn't that. We're 10 days behind. When I spoke to Commissioner Danny Drake, he's the Beadle County Chairman, and I asked him, what advice do you have to Yankton County? He said, my advice is, don't wait. We waited too long, and now they've had to close everything down. They have community spread, more cases each and every day in Beadle County. Our number one priority is protecting the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. Now, if there's some apprehension, I'm, I'm willing to set up this board for a period of 60 days. I think we need to select a physician and a nurse practitioner on it. Our state attorney will be president of the board. I trust our state attorney, a street, an extremely amount. He's a very good and capable elected official. But the whole design, as I understand of this board, is to take action to preserve people's life. That's the point of this for pandemics. And if this isn't an emergency, if COVID-19 is not an emergency, then what is? And I'm fine with limiting this to 60 days. If that would help make it more palatable. But as Commissioner Loz said, this is, this will likely come back and we're gonna be dealing with this for some time. So if it makes it more palatable, I'll amend it to setting up a board for 60 days. And we shall appoint the physician and the physician's assistant and one other person to serve on that board. I would volunteer to be that other person if that would help and have commission representation. But the time for action is now. We don't wanna wait and become Beadle County. We don't wanna do that. We have a chance here, and we have to support the city of Yankton in what they're doing.
With all due res-
I drove past, I drove past a rural bar, and I won't say which one it was, and there was 35 cars there at 4 o'clock. 35 cars. There are, most people are gonna comply with the governor and the city, but unfortunately, not everybody will. That's why we have speed limits. That's why we have stop signs for the few people that aren't gonna comply. So if I limited it to 60 days, Commissioner Healy, would that, would that help you?
With, with all due respect, Dan, when, when this was proposed on the March 17 meeting, there was little to no detail provided on, on the direction or the intent of why we were, we were looking at it. There was one specific section of the ordinance referenced on, that gives us the authority to appoint it with no, no discussion, no, no detail, no points to the entire chapter 3422 in its entirety. And, and again, today, we don't have, there's a lot of responsibility, a lot of power with this board. There's a lot of questions about it that, you know, that I have as far as what our intent would be. And again, I would ask that we first formulate a plan on what do we want to do? Because I don't think we need a doctor to tell us that COVID-19 is real and should be taken serious and should be dealt with. We've, we've had numerous doctors, numerous government entities tell us that. So again, I would ask that we formulate a plan, what, what do we want to do to protect our citizens? And then let's choose the vehicle, whether it's a health board, zoning, whether it's, whatever it is. But I think we need to pick our direction first and then discuss what we, how we will get there.
What would you like to see, Commissioner Healy?
Well, I, I certainly, I've read through the Sioux Falls ordinance that they passed. I think some of the Beadle County one, I, I liked. You know, regarding the, the Yankton ordinance, I don't want to come off as I'm throwing stones or, or complaining or saying they did wrong. I think they, I think they are doing what they feel is best for the community and using the authority given to them. The city of Yankton is a much different animal than the county outside of the city. The city of Yankton has the bulk of the population, the bulk of the businesses that promote congregation of people. The county of Yankton outside of the cities has, off the top of my head, I'm gonna say 10, 10 of those establishments. I question if we, if we came up with a board of health and enacted something, does it carry through to the cities? Or does it stop at the city line? Because our ordinances do not apply to the city of Yankton, Gayville, Valen, Mission Hill, Utica. So I would like this to be thought through, and I would like to, to ensure that those communities work with them to, to come up with a plan that, that they're supportive of, so we do have some unity within the county.
Yeah, I, I took the liberty of contacting the mayor of Lesterville and Utica. I contacted a board member in Gayville, Mission Hill, and Valen. And all of them, you know, they can't speak for their board, but are supportive of this action because if we don't do something, each one of those is going to have to create yet their own ordinance.
Supportive of which action?
It's one of our small towns, and I won't, I won't say which one, but they're already having problems with an establishment, you know, not limiting it to 10 people. So I do think we have to take a leadership position and a leadership role in Yankton County because our small community certainly don't have the resources that we do to do that.
So I'll ask again, if, if this board is, is, is formed, what do you see it doing? What, what is the end game here? What's the goal?
I'd like to see it advise us on the county about the procedures that we should do if we have a, a business that, you know, not complying with the 10-person rule or, or things of that nature. I, I think we need to have some enforcement on that, just like the city has done and just like other counties have done. What, what are we gonna do now if some of the areas in, in, outside of Yankton County aren't complying with this?
I, I think we need to take a step back here and ask the question, what is our legal authority? I mean, we could, we could say we're going to set up a health board, but the city of Sioux Falls and the two counties that encompass all of those people have said they don't feel they have the authority to close businesses down. And they have taken a different approach to it. So they are being advised by their lawyers and their insurance companies that they don't have the legal authority to do that.
I think-
Is that a board?
No.
No, but the, the thing about the health board is, and a, a good point was brought up already, we have a team of almost 70 people, and most of them are medical providers that are, that are advising us, and you're on the calls, I'm on the calls, and Joe's on the calls often during the week, who are advising us of the current situation and exactly where our county is at. So my pushback is, would three more people add anything more that we are currently not receiving from the specialists that we have put on that task force? Or is this just an avenue where some counties feel it gives them the legal authority to enact and enforce? And to Joe's point, what is the goal? And once you identify the goal, how do you get there legally? Because our job is not just to protect the citizens of the county. Our job is to protect the county itself. And that, and that is not an easy decision. And to your point, Dan, we, we volunteered for this. We, we cannot just focus on one aspect of an issue in front of us.
So I'll, I'll just, I, I think, I don't know if people need to lay their cards on the table or what, but I, what I feel needs to happen based off the recommendations of numerous boards, numerous groups, is we do need to take some action. I think we, I would support something like, like what Sioux Falls did. Encourage businesses, and not just encourage, but we need to hold businesses to the 10-person rule or, or guideline by the CDC. But I mean, I'll just come out and say, I don't, I do not support closing all bars in the county because one of them is potentially being irresponsible. And I don't support closing specific businesses. I do, I would support enabling some sort of ordinance or authority to, to enforce the 10-person rule.
Where, where does your authority to enforce an ordinance for the 10-person rule come from?
So, so again, Dan, what, what I'm asking is that we, we pick, we agree on what we would potentially like to enforce or enact, and then we'll figure out how to do it. But I've asked five times now, and I haven't got an answer on what, what the, and if we adopted a health board, what you see happening? Would it be a closure of certain businesses? Would it be, I mean, what, what, having three more people advise us, yes. But we'll have to take their recommendations and make a decision with that. So what, where do you feel this going?
I think if we do set up a health board, first off, we'd wanna start with education if we have a business or an organization that's not complying, just like you said, with the 10-person rule. First, we, you know, discuss them, and I, and I realize you guys have called some businesses already, and some of them have complied and some of them have not. And, and I think that this, from what I read, this, this health board would, would have the authority to close down non-compliant businesses that are not doing the PDC recommendation of the 10 people. And I think this is a lot quicker way to do it than for us to create a whole other zoning ordinance and then have another reading and then another reading after that. Pretty soon, we're, we're two weeks down the road and it's already too late.
So Dan, with your argument right there, there would have been no reason for anybody to pass the ordinances that are laying in front of us if they had a health board. Because their health board, you are saying, already has the right to close businesses down.
The city's health board does not.
Then why would our health board?
Pardon me?
Then why would a county health board have that authority if a city health board does not?
If you look at 34-16-24, this board is allowed to take action in the event of immediate danger.
Yep, and so if, if the city just set up a health board, why do they then need a second ordinance if the health board can already enforce it without that separate ordinance?
Could you read me in codified law where it says the city has that authority?
I have city-
I looked at city ordinance, as I looked at county ordinance.
Well, I have the city ordinance, section 1118, health authority of the health officer. And their authority, paragraph B, is the health officer may cause any unsanitary or unhealthy conditions to be changed or remedied in such manner as may be necessary for the protection of public health.
So again, it goes back to what is the end goal? What is your end goal, Dan? Is your end goal to-
What is, what is your, Madam Chairman, what's your end goal? To wait around and not do anything until we start filling body bags? I wanna protect the citizens of Yankton County. This is my suggestion. If you have a better one, my dear-
And with respect, we are trying to find the best avenue to achieve the goal to protect the citizens in our county. And, and just, you're, you're averting my question. What do you want to see? We understand you feel a health board is needed, but in the end goal, why is a health board needed? What are they going to do specifically to address your concerns?
Can I interject here while you're talking?
No, no.
I didn't, could you say that again? Because you broke up a little bit. I'm, I'm on a video conference.
Okay, what I'm asking is, what is your specific intent with setting up a health board? What do you want to see them do specifically?
I'm gonna read you some codified law here, 34-16-24. Supervision of public health matters by superintendent. Actions without board in the event of immediate danger. The superintendent of the county board of health shall have charge of and superintend, subject to the approval of the board, all the matters and things specified in this chapter. In cases of immediate danger, kinda like we're in right now, immediate danger, to the health of persons, the superintendent may act without consultation of the board for the prevention of such danger and shall immediately report to the president of the board and to the secretary of health. My goal, Commissioner Loz, is to protect the citizens of Yankton County. And I feel, and this is, you might disagree with me, and that's fine, the best way to do that is to set up a public board of health with doctors and medical personnel that are much more up to speed on this than I am, and certainly more than you are of the other board members. And if you don't wanna do that, that's fine. But I would call the question, and let's vote, and you can vote how you choose to, and then we can go on to your plan if it doesn't pass. But I feel we have to take action. We have to take action today. So I would call, Madam Chairman, I call the question.
I'd like to add something.
Dan, is it all right if I allow Gary to speak at this time?
That's your call, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Gary.
Sherry, back up just a little bit. You made the comment that you, Commissioner Healy and Commissioner Clemish were having conference call, conference calls with these medical doctors and professionals. I've not been in those conference calls. Don, have you been involved in those conference calls?
Haven't wanted to.
Do what?
I haven't wanted to.
But I was never notified about it, and I wasn't in on it. But, you know, I'm a commissioner too.
Paul sent out emails to everybody.
That's what?
Paul has sent out emails to everybody. It's, every day I do-
Just because emails go out to everybody doesn't always mean they get them. And I didn't get anything like that. So I don't know, maybe I'm just chomping liver, and a couple of you hate me anyways, so.
Are you sure you read it?
Okay. With respect, we have a question on the floor. To create a county board of health, we have a motion and a second. And at this time, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Clemish?
Yeah.
Swenson?
Yes.
Healy?
No.
Kennedy?
No.
Loz?
No. Motion fails.
Comment?
No, Madam, go ahead, sorry, Madam Chairman.
If you listen to the news yesterday, when the news reporters asked our president how many deaths were acceptable to this virus, he said none. He said none. Also wanna say something else. My dad, who was a head maintenance guy at the Yankton Medical Clinic for decades, plus farming, although he had an eighth grade education, made a statement a lot of times, "W-" farming, although he had an eighth grade education, made a statement a lot of times, wait, W-A-I-T, wait broke the wagon down. You people can keep on waiting and waiting, and you can end up like Italy. The blood's going to be in your hands, not Dan Clemish and mine.
I'd like to reiterate that because I didn't support a county health board without discussion of directions and details of it, does not mean that I'd like to wait and not take action to protect the citizens. I think it's short-sighted to push a vote without having true discussion, but I'd like to ask Madam Chairman if we can get back to a discussion on what we feel we can do, not a, not a community health board to advise us or to take action. Knowing what we know today, what can we do to help protect our citizens? And I would, I would direct our attention back to what Sioux Falls has done and what I stated earlier that I would support. And it's not a closure of all bars or all certain businesses, but an enforcement arm to, to the 10-person rule and to, an enforcement arm essentially to carry out what Governor Noem put forth as an executive order.
Okay. I'd like to also say, 10 days ago, at our regular commission meeting, Commissioner Clemish brought up this same motion. He brought it up, I seconded it.
No.
And the three of you shot it down.
I will stop you there. It was not on the agenda. We could not formally vote. So there was no motion.
But he did, he did bring it up.
Yes.
And you did vote on it?
No. We did not vote on it because it was not on the agenda. We were not allowed.
Okay, but it wasn't, it wasn't that you weren't knowledgeable about it. You knew about it 10 days ago.
Yep, and we discussed about putting it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Okay, but you had 10 days to think about it.
So we want to make sure we correct that statement.
Well, we just wait for a couple of years and for you guys.
Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, may I have a moment?
Yes.
Gary, Sherry is correct, it wasn't on the agenda.
Yeah.
I just brought it up. This was my suggestion, and it has failed. I am listening. Let's get some sort of plan together.
I agree.
So.
Let's move on, and let's get something figured out. This was my idea, but let's think of something else that would be acceptable.
So, Joe, I'll give the floor back to you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to read, if I find it in front of me, some of the highlights of what Sioux Falls did. And I'd like to reiterate some of the reasoning that they did that, and some of the reasoning that Governor Noem has come out to say why her executive order is written the way it is, as a suggestion and shoulds, rather than mandating closure of business, and that is Sherry alluded to on the call. If she's advising that the county's at great liability, and potentially our insurance company would not cover anything, if we single out businesses, I certainly don't feel that that's the way we should go, even without that recommendation. I don't feel that's the way we should go when there are responsible business owners out there doing the right thing. I don't feel that we should punish them because there's a few that may not. And so how do we address it and continue to keep our county safe and address only the businesses that are not doing the right thing? And I think Sioux Falls did it.
Madam Chairman?
No.
May I have a floor, please?
No, Joe has the floor.
Okay, I thought he was.
So in, in the Sioux Falls ordinance, they define social distancing, enclosed retail businesses, patron, et cetera. They discuss city-owned properties. But I'll get right to where they go into private businesses. And what they say, they make it a class two misdemeanor, I believe. Somewhere in here, I got to look, but they say, "Any enclosed retail business that promotes public gatherings shall modify business practices in order to ensure that not more than 10 patrons are on the premises for onsite use of the services and/or consumption of the goods at any given time. Such businesses are encouraged to consider utilizing business models that do not involve public gatherings, including takeout, delivery, drive-through, curbside service, and off-site services." It goes through restrictions do not apply to the following. And to be honest, it really is reiterating what we hear over and over and what the governor has, has put in her order. What they do is put some teeth to it, and we, if we were to discuss something like this and have it, say, a class two misdemeanor, I would hope that people would, would start to follow it. And if enforcement was necessary, I think we have the means to do that. One other thing to keep in mind for some of these businesses is they have liquor license renewals annually. And if they choose, if we go down this path and they choose to ignore our proposals that we may come up with, it could have lasting effects on that, on particular businesses. And that would not impact the businesses that are currently operating under the CDC guidelines and changing their business practices or closing. Thoughts?
Dan, you're free to speak. Dan, did you still want to make your comment?
I'm just listening right now, Madam Chairman.
Okay.
Let's ask our county attorney on enforcement. Because in my opinion, basing ordinances and laws that aren't enforceable are very dangerous.
Yeah. And I did have a conversation with Joe this morning, and the first thing I referenced to Joe is, where's our authority to do whatever we want to do? And I've been trying to figure that out the last few months, and that's before we heard anything from Kristi Noem or before there's been any comments saying, where's your authority in doing what you're going to do? Talking to Chairman Healy, he made reference, under the temporary zoning controls, and it gets into the zoning controls, and it talks about public health, safety, general welfare. And talking to Joe about that, I don't think that that's not a bad idea, where we're limiting zoning controls and we're referencing zoning the 10 or more issue. The law does provide, any violation of it would be a class two misdemeanor, just that's what the statutes provide, if we violate that and put something that, like that together. I, I know Joe came up with the idea. I do like the idea, and I do think that that's a thought we should consider. I know we have that 10-day window, and we need to respond quickly, and I do agree with Chairman Clemish and Swenson, and I know it's a concern today. But again, as Mr. Kettering said, we got to figure out what we can enforce, where our rules are. And the first thing I did was, what does the county board have for rules? And I was going over that with Joe this morning and reading through, where's our power, where's our power, where's our power, to do with what we want to accomplish, and that is to limit contact, social distancing, people. I do like the temporary zoning control. I do. I think most of the things that are brought up, and I did read Beadle County, I don't know if they did a mental health or a health board, I don't show that in their ordinance. But again, it goes back to enforceability. So let's say we're violating this, and we have 10 or more, what are we going to do? You know, can we enforce these things? I do like the temporary zoning control. I know that did cause some concern before, but I kind of like it. I don't think that that's a bad idea for us to consider and put together, and remember, it's zoning controls, you know, 10 or more, that's a zoning control. Some of the things we probably couldn't control, like social distancing maybe, but limiting size is one, something, and I know Joe made the comment on what Sioux Falls and kind of read that passage. Something similar to that makes some sense, you know? So I did, I did like Joe coming up with that idea. But again, it goes back to the thing is, where's your control? Where's your control? Where's your authority to enforce your control? I mean, most of the things you're going to do is say, let's just do it and do our best and listen, but if we violate it, we have nothing. So that's where we're running into issues, is we have nothing. You have to come up with where that authority is, and I know Kristi Noem stated it, and again, that's before I knew that she stated it. We always have to figure out where our control is and what we can do. We can say whatever and do whatever. But I, I do kind of like the temporary zoning control, limiting it to zoning controls, right, the 10 or more, and do with that. I'm concerned of shutting businesses, too. Again, I don't see the authority anywhere to do that, but I do see, or an avenue to enforce the 10 or more thing.
Mr. State's attorney, that would require 10 days' notice, is that correct, for emergency zoning ordinance control?
Yeah, Dan, I did make that comment when I was stating my, my position, but it does, it does do that.
Thank you, thank you.
I got another question for the state's attorney. Rob, back to the board of health, I mean, do you feel that if we did set up a board of health, that the board of health would have the authority to shut down a business that was not complying?
My, I would be concerned, it does concern me, because when you read it, it references, when you're, when you're reading under the 34-16-24, it references that the board has the power for all the matters and things specific in this chapter. It does reference regarding nuisances, because that's what the, the statute references, and it says, "Notice to owners of nuisances," and it says, "Any nuisance, source of filth, cause of sickness, or condition which endangers the public health is found on the property." And so the argument would be made that the condition of keeping a restaurant open causes the public health. That, in my opinion, would be a pretty significant stretch, but could you make the argument that the condition which endangers the public health is 10 or more people? That does make sense to me on that. I don't know about closing that, to that extreme, but I do believe the argument on 10 or more people under the public health thing would, would be an argument also.
Thank you.
So I guess I would like to just understand where people sit in addressing these issues. If, you know, the three options with some gray in between all of them is do, you know, do nothing and hope, hope business owners do the right thing, go in and close them, or look at imposing, let's say, the 10-person rule, or some variant in between. That's where, Dan, I originally said before we pushed the issue and called the question, I'd like to know where, where people stand and where we, as a body, feel we can go. And then let's figure out how to do it. I'll tell you, I do not support closing businesses.
Even if those businesses are not, say, there's a big party at the lake and there's 100 people there, then why are we doing any zoning or any ordinance whatsoever if we're not going to get them closed? I mean, I got to agree with Don. If we're going to lay rules down, we have to enforce them, or what's the point?
I guess, let me rephrase that. I do not support closing all businesses of a certain type blanket across the county. Now, if a certain business, if we enact an ordinance or, whether it's a health board, Dan, or whether it's an ordinance, or however we do it, if, if an individual business is noncompliant, sure, we'd look at that path. But what I'm saying is, I don't support, I don't support, let's just go back to the city of Yankton, and adopting that verbatim for the county. And again, I'm not trying to say that to throw stones at, at the city in passing that. I just don't feel it applies to the rest of the county.
Yeah, I can understand that perfectly, Joe. And I got to, I got to give credit to a lot of the rural restaurants, because they've already adapted their, their business model by doing takeout, or somebody will order a beer, and then they, you know, unopened, of course, take it with them. So a lot of businesses, through their own initiative, have either changed their business practices to comply or they've closed down. With me personally, I, I think we need some sort of mechanism to deal with the people that refuse to change and aren't going to under any circumstance. And, you know, there's not going to be many of them, but, but there's going to be a couple. And that's what the small-town board members, that's their fear that they relate to me is because they're going to have, they know they're going to have problems with that. So I guess, you know, I'm fine with however the board wants to go. Nobody wants to shut down a business. If a restaurant out in the Lake area wants to do takeout only or drive-through, I'd say keep them open. But it's the ones that aren't complying with this that I have concerns about.
Right.
I concur with Dan.
And to add into that, you know, I know we're looking for different ways to approach it, and another way would be, you know, we have to create an emergency zoning, like the state's attorney, but, but that's at least 10 days' notice, so we're looking at the earliest about two weeks. And I, in my personal opinion, is two weeks is too long to do this.
If we went down that path, we can't do it today and have this be the first reading, can we? Because it technically wasn't on the agenda. Can we have a meeting Monday? So we could have a meeting Monday, have something in place that outlines the 10 or, 10 or more, essentially, and it should apply to businesses in the county in general.
Not just bars and restaurants, everything.
Businesses in the county.
Madam Chairman, we, from how I understand, we have to give 10 days' notice prior to the hearing that we adopt, is that correct, Mr. State's attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Vetter is shaking his head up and down.
And that's true.
And then it goes into effect.
We're looking at Mondays, Tuesdays, 10 days' notice. I mean, I guess with the weekend, we're looking at 12, at the least, like 13 days. So we're looking at, you know, next, well, two weeks, about the 7th or 8th, the earliest this will go into effect.
So we get to count the weekends? So it wouldn't be next Monday, it'd be the Monday after that? Or Tuesday, if we got it in the newspaper?
I'm pleased to get it into the newspaper and things, too.
Okay.
I guess, Madam Chairman, I would encourage us to get back to finding concurrence on what we're going to agree on as far as enforcement, and then we're getting hung up on the details of the 10 days or the details of a, of a health board that we haven't discussed.
Yep, I totally agree.
And I think we need to get, we need to figure out what we, what we agree on, what we can do. And then let's look at, okay, a county health board, what are its duties? What are its powers? What are its authorities? What are the details? And does it make sense? Yes or no? If not, you know, temporary zoning, can we live with the 10 or 12 days if we want to enact this? Those discussions need to happen after we, we agree on what we want to do.
Yep, I agree with that, and I think that we had, I had a lot of heads bobbing up and down with the idea of what Sioux Falls essentially did in not closing businesses down, but limiting regulation, essentially. So I will let everyone comment if, if they can. So I will let everyone comment if, if they can come out and support that.
Madam Chairman, I support limiting the size or the number of people in the business to 10 or less. I totally support that. I think businesses that comply with, you know, restaurants at least, need to comply with the takeout portion. I mean, are we gonna let, are we gonna have restaurants with 10 people in it? I mean, are we gonna allow that? Or are we gonna allow only takeout? Because the situation, and just, just like you said, Madam Chairman, in your Facebook Live yesterday, restaurants are the place where people sit for an hour or two hours in close proximity with another person. So I think the reasoning that certain businesses were, you know, targeted for closure is because of the amount of exposure. Now, if I go run into a convenience store and grab a soda and leave, I'm not there very long. But if I get my, you know, somebody's getting their hair colored and cut, they're having face-to-face exposure to that person in very close proximity for hours. And I, and listening to the city, that was the reason that certain businesses were asked to temporarily close down because the risk, according to the doctor for the health board, is that it was an unacceptable risk with being so close for such a long period of time.
Yep, and the challenge becomes, anybody can have a garage party and have people sit there. So at what point do you stop policing and expect people to police themselves? There has to be a balance in there. My children want to go see their friends, you know? So do I allow my oldest son to continue going coon hunting at night with his buddy? That's a choice that I have to make as a parent. So, so there's, there's a balance here. And I think generally, we're going down the direction of not closing businesses. But you can go to Walmart and there might be five people standing there having a conversation. And, and that's very similar. So it's extremely hard to police. And it goes back to what can we enforce? And what can we enforce fairly? So I do like the idea of 10 or less. And, and then at some point, we need to expect businesses to figure out how to get that done safely. When I called the town of Leesterville, they said, well, do we need to close the co-op? And, no, you don't need to close the co-op. But they need to understand when, when people come into their establishment, they need to be standing six feet apart. And they've, they've closed down the morning coffee there because they might get five or six people, but they chose to close that down. So we have to have some faith in this as well. But still, target those folks that for some reason totally are oblivious to the risk that, that we face.
I would agree with you, Madam Chairman. This is not targeted at many, many, many businesses and citizens who are responsible. Unfortunately, the other ones is where we have to direct this to.
I'd like to say something too.
Go ahead, Gary.
I don't want to put any business, any, any place out of business. South Dakota's a hard enough state to run a business to begin with. I do support the takeout versus the 10 people in a building. The janitors can clean a restroom spotless. All it takes is one of the 10 customers to go in there and mess it up. So I support the takeout. I'm not trying to limit anything, but if you're gonna put a dividing line, I want those businesses to be in, in business. So, but like I said, one person in the restroom messes it up for the other 10 or the, the next 10 that come in.
And, you know, and the challenge with that argument is Walmart has a restroom, gas stations have restrooms, Bomb Cars has a restroom. I mean, so where, again, where do you go back to draw what is a reasonable line to draw? And, and you keep going back to what Sioux Falls did with the 10, just the blanket. Everybody needs to abide by 10 or less and, and go with that. And as Joe stated, it's very few businesses outside the city of Yankton that we are focusing on.
And the other, the question I have as well. You know, Dan, I know you've mentioned like some of the smaller communities are looking to us just as we had looked to the state to offer guidelines or, or implement something. But quite frankly, I am not certain that anything we implement crosses, crosses the, the city limits line.
And then also, you brought up the subject of closing the, what was it? The co-op in Leesterville or something? Well, Walmart service center is closed unless you have an emergency. So I've talked to some of the other people around, like TMA and places. They're getting, they're getting the overload, the overflow. So they're more busy, they've got more people there. So it's a chain reaction. So like Walmart, unless you've got a blown-out tire or just an emergency, their service center, you can't get your oil changed or anything, so.
So I guess I would challenge.
Let Joe Hisifor first.
I guess I would challenge us to come up with some terms, call it, that we can agree on and take a leadership stance in the county and, and promote this and adopt something and let the, the smaller communities follow suit. If that's what, if they're looking for, for guidance. But I don't think we can impose anything upon them.
Sorry, Cherry, maybe, sorry, maybe even entertain going back to the Board, the, the Board of Health. And in there, when it talks about their powers, it does say, subject to the approval of the Board, which the Board is actually, will come to you and then it'll be that Board. But I think you could put restrictions on this Board saying what you'd want them to enforce in addition to. And I know time is of the essence and I know we're talking through this. But with the nuisance argument, I would think if the county commission put restrictions on what the Board could enforce at least to some limit pending an immediate danger, maybe that would put that restriction on it. Maybe we're solving everything we're talking through a little better. You know, the 10 or more, whatever the Board, the county commission agrees that they would want that Board to enforce. And then it's going to go back to the medical person, who really is appointed by the Department of Health. Because when you read this appointment, it says, the State's Attorney shall be the President. And then you need a physician, a physician's assistant, or certified nurse practitioner who practices in the county, appointed by the Department of Health. So that individual is Department of Health appointee. And then that person is in charge with enforcing what that Board decides, really with the approval of the county commission. So maybe the limitations on this commission coming up with what you would want that Board to enforce, then that would be something that occur, could occur immediately instead of waiting out a 10-day window period of time. Because the argument would be, they have the ability to enforce nuisance violations. And it says, source of filth, cause of sickness, or condition which led to endanger the public health. Well, again, the condition could be the 10 or more. The cause of sickness could be the 10 or more. You know, those kind of things. Again, where you're not closing the business, but you're restricting the condition that's leading to the concern for the spread of the virus, the COVID-19, that's the spread. Having the hair salon open with one individual in there type of thing and they're practicing safe medical procedures or whatever, that's not the concern. The concern is there's 11 people in there and we're increasing the risk of what's going to occur. So maybe if that's what the commission's looking towards, maybe with some restrictions in appointing the Board, understanding the superintendent is going to be the medical director and the medical director can enforce. And that comes back to the class-two misdemeanor where you issue a ticket, you fine them, you know, up to $500, 30 days in jail. And then, Joe, you do say this, you reference, well, I'm going to see you again. So if it's a liquor license thing and you're, you've got a couple tickets and you're not violating, and now we're not that excited about entertaining, you know, renewing your liquor license or your beer license, your off-sale license, whatever it is. So just some ideas, sorry. I'm just trying to think through a plan a little bit, so.
So I just want to be clear on that. So you're saying we can, we can make a county health board that is solely essentially for COVID-19? And this whole, all the dead animal things and stuff? We can, we can say, you, those don't apply to you. We can say, this is only for COVID-19. Can we give an end date to it?
Cherry, I believe so. It does reference the county commission having authority. So I do feel you could limit it to whatever you want it to limit it to and then give it some guidance. It does say, the chairman, you know, the superintendent has the ability for imminent danger, probably have a little more power than you, you could restrict. But under the circumstances, under your parameters, I believe it could act. And again, you're going back to the medical director, you know, the mayor, whoever is appointed by the Department of Health, which I'm assuming is a phone call.
Who defines imminent danger?
That would be the superintendent. That's who it would be. So it'd be, I'm guessing, you know, who we use today, you know, is who would be the person that would be it.
Can we, can we limit that authority and, and require approval of the commission before?
I would, I would think you could put whatever limitations that you want that Board to operate under, as long as it falls underneath that statute, right? I mean, it could be less, can't be more, but it could be less.
Because I guess.
Madam Chairman, you know, I think the whole point of a Board like this in times that we deal with where it's an emergency is we, we want them to have the ability to act. We want to, just like we empower our department heads who we trust, pick a medical doctor. We have our elected State's Attorneys on this Board and another person we trust. With these times of, of emergency, if they have to do something, I think we need to allow them to do it. We can't afford to, if it was a Friday and an event like this came up, we'd have to wait two, three days to get our commission together to then vote on having them do that. Then it would be another day. With the situation we're in now, days and hours equate to lives. And so I think we pick people for this position that we trust and we let them do their job.
Well, to some degree, we don't have the ability to pick. It sounds like the Department of Health picks the doctor, so be clear on that.
And I'm fine with what Commissioner Eliot said where we limit this to just the pandemic and, and we set it up for 30 days or 60 days, however long we, we feel is necessary. I'm fine, I'm fine with all of that. I just see this as, as the quickest avenue as opposed to a 10-day emergency zoning ordinance and then a reading and then we're, we're two weeks down the road. And, and then maybe we're like Beetle County at that point. We still have time to act. I feel time is of the essence.
How about we do them both?
That's not a bad idea, Don.
We do them both consecutively. And then when, when the, the plan, the revised plan is, is set up, we drop, drop the county health board.
You know, and some of the discussion I had with Rob this morning is, it does not hurt to have something in ordinance regarding something like this that would give, in the future, give the commission authority to do something in a timely manner. Because as we've kind of discussed, this is likely to die off over the summer and potentially rear its head again in the fall. And there's going to be, what was it, 2013, there was the threat of Ebola coming here? 2009, we had SARS. I mean, there, we probably should be planning for the future and not starting and stopping a health board every time we think we might need it.
Opioid addiction.
Yep. So.
Where, where would the authority come to? I mean, can we set up temporary ordinances that, I mean, when, when this goes away, we certainly want people to go back to restaurants. I guess I don't see where, anywhere codified law where we have the ability to, you know, set up ordinances that we, we choose when they go. And I get, I get what you're probably saying is have an emergency ordinance ready to go and when the situation arises, you have 10 days' notice and enact it. Is that kind of what you're, what you're getting at, Commissioner Eliot?
No, I guess I'm thinking of our, a new ordinance that's, that's titled, pandemic emergency health, something along the lines of that, that's always in place. And that, you know, maybe the trigger for that Board to have the authority is state emergency health declared, which we have. And now we can operate and, and implement these practices that we're talking about without trying to reinvent the wheel every time or create a health board. And, because I, I mean, you know, I honestly have no, no issue moving down the path of a, of a health board. I just need to understand what, what its goals are. And I would like to see it be a temporary thing at this time because there's just a lot, lot in that article that I don't necessarily agree with. And I don't think we need another layer of government. So, but for, for this purposes, I mean, to, to limit businesses to 10 people and to try to implement following the governor's executive order, I am on board with whatever vehicle gets us there the fastest, provided it has the authority to do so. And if it is a health board, I can support that. But that's why I wanted us to find out where we want to go. And then let's talk about the best way to do so.
Sounds, Madam Chairman, this would be helpful. It sounds like we all agree. Let's focus on what we all agree on. We all agree we need to limit businesses to 10 people or less. Are we all correct on that? Everybody?
Well, I've got, I've got some, I've got some questions because I think it'll, take Stringer's, for example. In the summertime, they've got a, a big deck and, and outside area. Does that 10 people apply to both areas? Or does that apply just inside the building?
As of what I think Sioux Falls, they think they even addressed inside and outside. And I have the same concern if, if you allow 10 people inside and 10 people outside. And I would be fine with either way, as long as that business can monitor it. I think one thing to keep in mind when we're discussing this is, is this, this is not just passed indoors, this disease. And it is airborne. And so, you know, you would think you're safer outside, but you certainly, without keeping those distances, you certainly are, are at risk. And so, but if, if that's something, because I had the same thought. Okay, if you've got, there's plenty of, well, Stringer's, Cottonwood, several of them have indoor seating and then they have an outdoor patio bar setting. Do we, do we say you get 20? You know, I, I can certainly get behind something like that, something with some logic or reasoning behind it. But they need to be diligent about that, too. It's hard to monitor how many people you have sitting outside.
Sitting in the car and those sitting in the.
And, and I don't know how many of you guys watched the city when, the city video when they did this. These questions were best answered by Dr. Milroy and, and their attorney, Mr. Hunter. It's not that, it's the 10 limit for total people, including, you know, the bartender and stuff. So if, Dr. Milroy also suggested, she's been Board of Health person, that you need to make as few exceptions as possible because if you start making exceptions, everybody is gonna want an exception. And that makes it a lot, a lot more difficult. And I, I think this is, this is where we would be, somebody with medical background to say, you know, maybe this is okay, but this situation isn't.
Yeah, unfortunately, we have to write policy or, you know, look at this. Everyone's going to be impacted. You know, you could, you could take the square footage of a building and, and draw six-foot circles around everybody and see how many people you could fit in based off your building size. But. But I think for all intents, it's 10 people. Regarding indoors and outdoors, I I'm open to that discussion.
Madam Chair, before my phone dies here, 10%, we've been going for two and a half hours here. Maybe you want to read off the telephone numbers for the 4200 options.
Okay. I know it's... All right, if you are listening via Facebook and if you lose our feed because a battery has died, 800 phone number. It is 877-568-4106. The access code, 798-035-205. I'll read that one more time. It is 877-568-414106. And then the access code is 798-035-205. You are welcome to give that a call and listen via telephone.
Sure, can I see that?
Madam Chairman, I'm going to post that on the Facebook Live. Could you read that one more time? I give them my beloved number, though. I'm going to post it on our our live feed.
Which one do you want, Dan?
Gary's got it. He'll read it.
The access code?
Access code, 79er8035205, access code. I'm going to take a picture of it and post it, too.
Madam Chairman, I'd move for a five-minute recess and we can potentially get a something set up, a phone set up and just take, get, stretch your legs.
So I have a motion for a recess. Motion is second to recess for five minutes. Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Hi, Madam Chairman.
Yep.
Paul Schercelik still has a live feed going. I'm actually, if people want to go to Paul Schercelik, his live feed on Facebook is still going. So I just let the people know. Please do mention.
Okay, thank you for that. We're still going to take a five-minute restroom break here. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to come back into session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to come back into session, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion carries. We are now back in executive session. If you have joined us via the conference call, please mute your phones because we can hear you through the desk phone here if you do not mute your phone. So again, please mute your phone if you have dialed in using the 877 number. All right, back to our discussion where we left off with deciding essentially what we want to do and the best avenue to do it.
Madam Chairman, this is Dan Clement. I think we need to focus on what we all want to see at this point. And we all want to see, we all want to keep the Yankton County safe. We all know that. And we all want to limit groups of people to channel less. I think those are what we all agree on, correct? Does anybody not agree on that? Okay, so now what we're, I think the next step is we need to decide, are we going to follow suit with what the city of Yankton did and and close down essential businesses? Or are we going to allow businesses to stay open? And I think that's probably going to be a tough discussion. I think that's the next one we need to have.
I've stated my opinion on that and I I continue to feel that way.
I I believe I've made my opinion clear on that as well. I do not believe we have the authority to close the businesses. I am in favor of limiting their capacity at 10.
I I do not want to close any business in Yankton County.
Don?
I concur with.
Okay, so here we have four folks who have said they they choose not to close businesses but prefer to restrict their capacity. Dan, you're the only one who hasn't weighed in.
Oh, so I understand that we're going to keep bars open and hair salons and, you know, places where people have very, very close face-to-face contact. We're going to allow those open to maintain, be open? Is that correct?
Yes, that would be correct.
Well, if you, if four of you decided that, I guess it doesn't matter what my opinion is. So I'm ready to move on to the next one.
Well, I think your vote may not matter, but your opinion still does.
Well, I think a situation like this is definitely where we need to discuss with that healthcare professional and get their guidance. This same discussion was had almost exactly like we're having now. And Dr. Milroy, the Yankton City Board of Health person, made a very good explanation of why the city of Yankton did it the way they did it. For example, if you have one bartender who's infected asymptomatic, like 18% of the population who gets COVID-19 is asymptomatic, and they serve 100 people that night. Guess what happens to those people? You get one lady who, for example, I'm not picking on hairdressers, but, or we'll say a massage therapist, which is a very important service, is asymptomatic in COVID-19. Guess what's going to happen to all her clients? Right now, the guidance that I understand from the state and from the CDC is we need to limit non-essential services. You know, and and I guess I I think we need to follow suit with what the city has done. Otherwise, people are just going to drive a mile out of town and go to the bar out there. So that's my opinion.
I understand your feelings, Dan, and I I have to put a little bit of humor in this with all the seriousness that somebody said the non-essential people, the essential ones are the truckers, the people that are supplying the food, the warehouse people, the people that stock the shelves at night at all the stores, Walmart, Hy-Vee. They're they're exposed to all these people all the time, but all these fancy people, the rich ones in Hollywood, they consider them non-essential, which we don't have anything but Hollywood around here. But you're really seeing where the meat and potatoes are 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 the basics here, the the truck drivers, the farmers, the the people that do manual labor and and don't get much gratification for it. And especially, especially the maintenance, the janitors, the custodians, they're the ones that are always ignored. And those are the ones, along with the healthcare, they're exposed, the doctors and nurses. It it's a hard call to to say what are you going to close and what are you not going to close. Next week, we could be in a worse situation. Next week could be could be an awful lot better. But I just want to have a shout out to all the people that are that are driving those trucks. There's no limit on the load limits anymore either. That's that's an exemption. So they're 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 doing everything they can. And the blue collar workers never get enough. So, thanks.
One more thing to piggyback off what I said earlier. Eighty minors from the city of Yankton brought up a good point, and she said in California or New York, they traced back over 100 cases of COVID from one office worker in a in a law firm. Now, that law firm never had more than 10 people in it per the guideline, but the communication, and and this is so highly infectious through paper and media or whatnot, that person still infected all those people. So I I respect each one of your positions, but what we're doing here is a half measure. We are doing a half measure when we need to go the whole nine yards. If we're going to get serious and we're going to, we're going to try to stop this and prevent people from dying, we got to go all the way. A half measure does not work. And and again, that's my opinion, and I'm ready to move on.
Okay. You know, on that note, I feel social media today is probably probably has more effect on on a business's success in this community than a $500 fine. And I'm I'm confident that there will be people monitoring who's doing what. And I guess maybe the the correct message as well to send with this is if I was if I was a business owner, I don't want to be the one on the front page that says this spread here or this was the epicenter of it, starting in Yankton. And maybe some business owners don't don't mind being that headline, but I certainly wouldn't want my vehicle, the picture parked in front of it either. So I think I think the 10 people limitation is I'm comfortable with.
Okay, so we need an avenue for which to enforce this.
So, Rob, if we went to the county health board, as we kind of discussed trimming some of it and whatnot, how does that, how would that work as far as like an enforcement? I mean, did they, would they write an ordinance that could be enacted? Or how, you know, how does that?
I think, I almost think, Joe, I know we're kind of trying to figure it out on the fly, but I think they would just publish what they want to be enforced under the ordinance. And then the, it is a class two misdemeanor. And so then that would be a ticketed defense that the sheriff's office could go around and start ticketing businesses. And I believe that's what would occur.
Okay, and then they could just, probably to be proactive, send send that ordinance, resolution, whatever, to these businesses as a, okay, with public health board has been developed and this is the, these are the rules of the county now and you're subject to these fines and the-
Yeah, and Joe, I don't necessarily think you have to do that, but I think that's a great idea because it's it's a it's a limited number of businesses you're going to affect. So I think that's a great idea.
So essentially, could we say the Sioux Falls resolution essentially, because it's talking about the 10 people, is, could we say, well, we want you to implement that? And that is your guidance? That is the only thing you need to focus on?
And use that as a guidance. I do believe you could do that, yes.
Okay.
What if, Madam Chairman, what if the medical doctors who have expertise in this recommend something different?
Well, I think the majority of our board has already stated that we are not closing businesses. So we need to give clear guidance to this health board. And again, that-
Under any circumstances, under no circumstances will the county close a business?
At this point, I do not feel we have the legal authority to do it. The only way we're going to have the legal authority to do that is if the governor takes action to give us that authority. And if we are at a point, if we are at a point in our state where the governor is taking that action, then we will follow through.
Now, I I will say, I do think there's a difference between a nondiscriminatory closure of all businesses of a certain type are are different than if there's a particular business not adhering to to what we adopt. And that, I think, maybe is a different discussion.
Kind of an example would be like some liquor store selling to underage minors and they get their license revoked. Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Kind of an analogy.
Right.
They would be punished and not every liquor store owner.
Right. So I guess that being said, it may maybe warrant a discussion on how we handle somebody who's in gross negligence or noncompliant. Do they get a warning? Do they get two warnings? Do they get closed immediately? That, I suppose that discussion probably should be be had.
What do you say to that?
It is a ticketed offense, and maybe that's something that could be brought up in front of the commission if there's multiple offenses by the board. You know, Joe, and I know you're trying to trying to think of everything that, on how to handle of it. Maybe that's something that can be handled. I mean, we can call meetings in a pretty quick manner, you know, within a
Right.
short period of time. So it isn't that you can't have a meeting even tomorrow after the 24-hour period, you know, in the afternoon if you had to.
Yeah, I would question, I guess, even as a, you know, let's say you had three tickets. Do we have the authority to close or do we keep ticketing? I don't, you know, hopefully, we don't get to that, but I think I'm I'm okay with with proceeding towards this path with some limitations that we've discussed.
I I feel that the point of a board of health is to make a decision based on what's right for safety, health, and welfare. We are in a pandemic. This is the state of emergency. Our county and every one of you guys voted that we are in a state of emergency and we declare the gas disaster. So to then put all kinds of rules on that board to act, I think is is a mistake. I don't, I I can, I can go along with putting some limits on there, but I believe we still need this board, you know, to have the authority to do what they feel is necessary. And if we limit that to COVID-19 and we limit that to a 60-day timeframe, you know, would would the rest of the board be in favor of that?
You need to be a little more clear what you're asking, what we're in favor of.
A board of health with some restrictions?
Uh, yeah, I I am not in favor of a board of health that does not have restrictions. I just don't think that we can make a county board of health and just say, follow state law. So in my opinion, there needs to be restrictions.
And and Madam Chairman, why don't you tell us what you'd like to see?
Well, and I think it gets back exactly to what Joe says, is we need to define what needs to happen. So I have already stated that I am for following what Sioux Falls has done with your business may operate as long as you are less than 10 people in your facility. Highly encourage the takeout and and all of that. But I am not in favor of closing businesses down. I just don't believe- I- Today, we do not have the authority to do it.
So so no matter what a business does, if a bar wants to have 250 people in a van this weekend, we will, under no circumstances, do anything about it? Is that correct?
That would be more than 10 people.
Okay, but you said, under no circumstances will you close a business down?
I-
My point was, Dan, that at, under no circumstances are we giving a blanket authority to close businesses down.
But but what about businesses that are not in compliance? That's what I'm asking you.
Well, and I think that's what Joe was getting at, is what is our long-term authority? How many times?
Madam Chairman, Joe has stated that he he would be willing to close a business down that wasn't compliant. I'm asking you directly, are you, yes or no? Are you willing to shut down a business that is not in compliance?
If we have the authority to do it, and that is under the guidance of our state's attorney.
That's not a yes or no answer.
And I'm not giving you a yes or no answer, Dan, because unless I can see a state law that says that I have the right to close a business down because they get one ticket, two tickets, or three tickets, I am not giving you an answer if I am going to close that business down. It's no different if my neighbor has a party of 250 people. Should the county go out and give them a ticket and close them down?
I guess I guess still we need to work more closely with what the city of Yankton has done.
And I appreciate what they've done. They have made the choice that they feel is right for the businesses in their jurisdiction. But what I go back to is, at this point, we have been directed by the governor that we don't have the authority to do that action. And we run risk. And at this point-
She threw that authority, dumped that authority on local government. She said in her resolution, it's up to the local, it's up to the cities and the counties. She didn't say we couldn't, unless you have something you want to read. And I know you've been in meetings I haven't been in, but the directive I got when she did that resolution is county, cities, it's up to you, because I'm not going to do anything.
Yep, and it is up to us to act, Dan, and we are going to act in our authority. But it's no different than if we have a school shooting here. And then they come to your house and say, I'm going to take your guns because it's the right thing to do for public health. You have to put this into context of what is right under the law. We are a nation of laws. This is not China. And we have to do our very best to figure out how to work within those laws. Because if we don't, things in the future change pretty quickly. And to accuse anyone who is not agreeing with your point of not having the public health at the best interest is insulting.
Madam Chairman, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is this is an emergency. And I realize, my experience as a military officer, I've been through hundreds of combat missions, and I know what happens when you take half measures. And I know what happens when you don't follow through. This is an emergency.
Okay.
We have to act now, not tomorrow, or people will die.
Okay, sir, with respect, the only way we are going to stop this virus is to have martial law, and you cannot leave your home. And that is the wrong message, because long term, we have to adjust to the virus and learn to live with it. We cannot say if in two weeks this is going to be gone. This is a behavioral step change. And we need to figure out how to run our businesses and our workplaces, understanding we have an enemy that we cannot see. So to simply say that we need to close bars-
Madam Chairman, the position we are at right now, going on Commissioner Healy, is what do we do with the 1% or 2% of businesses that are not going to listen to it? I agree 100%. We need to modify our behavior, and that is going to work for 98% of people. We're talking about the 2% of people. And if we're going to, under no circumstances, deal with them, then guess what? Why should the vast majority of other people listen to anything? Don Kettering said it great earlier on, is if we're going to pass something that we have no intention of enforcing, why do it at all? And I guess that's my point, so I'm ready to move on.
I'd like to say something. My dad used to say that no job is impossible for the person that's not going to do it. I have the same frustration that Commissioner Clemish has. I was in military too. When some enlisted guys needed guidance, we went up the chain of command. We went to the lieutenants, the captains, the colonels, all the way to the general if it needed to be. Right now, our general that's in peer is AWOL. And dropped it on us. So now it's up to the privates and the corporals and the sergeants and the lieutenants to figure it out, and I think it's, doesn't show much leadership.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
If we can try to come to consensus, I think we know where we disagree, and if we can come to consensus where we do agree, if we looked at enacting a board of health per codified law 3416, is it 22?
Oh.
Okay, 341622.
Okay.
To be limited to responses directly dealing with COVID-19, to be enacted for 60 days from today with the extension which may be extended upon the approval of the county commission at a later meeting. This county health board shall model its enforcement actions to those referenced in the South Dakota Second amended and restated regulations of the Board of Health relating to COVID-19.
No, I would actually change that to maybe a June 2nd, so that way it would follow on our commission date, so we wouldn't have to have a special meeting to renew it.
Uh, yeah, that might make sense, Dan. Let me look at it. Is that 60 days or roughly?
April, May.
Roughly 60 days and some change, but I think it'd be better if it landed on a commission date. Or we wouldn't want it to end on Sunday, and that's not hard to mean. So we do have a scheduled meeting for June 2nd, so I would propose it go till then.
Okay. Patty?
My only concern with that, again, Joe, is that Sioux Falls is just a recommendation, is it not?
No, it's not a recommendation.
Could you, do you have a copy of the Sioux Falls ordinance that you could share with me via email, or I could read it on what it says about businesses?
The Sioux Falls one was in the packet. Patty says the Sioux Falls one was in the packet.
All right, I'll take a look.
If it's, if you don't find it in there, I found it. I don't know, I found it through Google.
I've got a copy of it here.
And that commission meeting, yeah, they're in the packet, the June is June 4th.
Because of the elections.
Oh, that's right.
That's what I was wondering, because that's the primary.
June 4th. Dan, I just sent you a copy that I got from Jim Schmidt in Lincoln County.
Did you send it to my email?
I did. And it's actually the Minnehaha Commission. In there, this is a resolution that the Minnehaha Commission will be voted on today. They made it a resolution as opposed to an ordinance due to the fact of county authority to enforce. Is that?
Yeah, actually, I think we need to be real careful with that, because I talked to Carol Moltar, who's the chief of staff for the Minnehaha County Commission, and she told me they were going to actually propose three different resolutions. They were going to propose one that goes as far as closing things down, and then one in the center and another one. I never received them, so if we're saying that, brat, this is what Minnehaha County did, I don't know that with certainty. Have they met yesterday? And done that?
With due respect, this is what we're doing.
They were meeting, hey, so.
Yeah, but what we're talking about is what we're doing today, and I think the Minnehaha will be similar to the Sioux Falls, what they did. The Sioux Falls one, I actually got off the newspaper's website.
But we're saying that this is what Minnehaha County's done, and we don't know that.
No, what I sent you for your information was what Minnehaha was doing. That's not what we're discussing today. We're discussing Sioux Falls. And they're different.
I think there's a fundamental difference, though, with a city, the power of a city versus the power of a county. You know, the city derives their authority from, you know, resolutions, where we derive our authority from state laws, I understand.
So the intent of this, I guess, is is to enact the county health board in accordance with state law provided to us, but limiting the board's actions as we've discussed today. And I reference the Sioux Falls the Sioux Falls resolution, or whatever we call it, because it identifies the definition of social distancing and closed retail businesses, patrons. But more specifically, I guess, it identifies where the restrictions would not apply. And that is to healthcare facilities, childcare, hotel, motel, airport, crisis shelters, homeless shelters, so on and so forth. So I thought that would be a much easier way of, instead of reinventing the wheel, this would be a guideline for the board of health that we are discussing right now.
I would be fine with using that as a reference, but I don't think we should, you know, make necessarily our board of health for the county follow what is in the city, because I'm totally, I'm absolutely fine with using it as a reference or guide.
I support having it be part of the resolution, that they must follow that. So I would-
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion to set up a county board of health in accordance with South Dakota's codified law, section 34-16-22, to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic in Yankton County. I, this board will be stood up until June 4th, at which time it could be extended by a vote of the county commission. And a further move will use the Sioux Falls City Resolution as a guide.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to create a county board of health that would expire on June 4th, with the potential to be extended. Their focus is COVID-19. The model for Sioux Falls will serve only as a guide. That is the motion on the floor. Further discussion.
I think I want it to be exclusively COVID-19, since it's only 60 days, since it isn't a continuing thing.
Yep, I think he said, did you-
What if we get hit with something else? What if we get a mutation and it becomes COVID-20?
Then we come in-
We've got to redo this all again.
Then we come in, sit down, and discuss it again.
And we wait longer. Let's incorporate it right now. Let's not start putting limitations on it again, Dan. You know, you and I don't agree on a lot of things, but-
We don't agree on anything.
It feels like Nancy Pelosi's sitting next to me.
Okay, that's enough.
I think, I think any mutation of this would be covered under the COVID-19 anyway. To the discussion that we had previously of long term, I think this may be something we want to address as a separate ordinance for long-term solutions.
Yes. Yes. I feel strongly that it should be a requirement that they follow the Sioux Falls outline.
I would be okay with it as a guide with the statement that there will be no blanket closures of businesses of any sorts.
Then we have to make an amendment to that.
Does that sound reasonable?
I want my motion to stand how it is, Madam Chairman.
We can amend it. If someone chooses to make an amendment and there's a second, we will vote on the amendment first and then the original motion.
I don't agree with my motion being amended.
I don't either.
I don't think you have a choice in that.
Well, we have a motion and a second right now, and I think we should vote on the motion that's on the floor. If you want to propose a different motion, certainly can, but I stand by my motion.
And I respect you standing by your motion, but if Commissioner Healy wants to amend your motion, he has the right to do that. Do you want to amend the motion?
I would. So I would amend it. I would leave in the reference to the Sioux Falls Second amended and restated regulations of the Board of Health relating to COVID-19 with the amendment that the Board of Health does not have blanket authority or authority to close, how would I say that, blanketly close businesses of certain types throughout the county.
What are those certain types?
Anything.
Any business.
What I'm saying is they can't say, bars, all bars are closed, all salons are closed.
I don't think you can amend my motion like that, especially after I had a motion in the pocket.
Yeah, State's Attorney, what's your opinion on amending the motion?
I believe it can be amended, but I know Dan's would be voted on. You know what I mean? Dan's with the first and a second will be voted on, and then you can vote on the amendment also.
You vote backwards.
Yeah.
Yep, because if the amendment, it's no different than watching the Senator, the House floor, when they propose an amendment. They discuss the amendment, they vote on the amendment, if it's up or down, whatever, and then they go and vote on the original bill. So-
Well, I guess I'd like to add an amendment that the resolution of Sioux Falls is only a guide.
That's in your-
That's already in your original motion.
What we're trying to do, again, I'm going to say, is we're taking half measures here. We're trying to water this bill down, this motion down so much that this board of health can't do anything that it's supposed to do. And I just don't feel that's right.
Man, I-
Because I've been appointed by the Department of Health as a responsible physician, and a nurse practitioner, or a physician's assistant, and our very own state attorney who's in the room right next to you. I trust our attorney, Rob Clemish, a tremendous amount. He's an elected official of this county. He will do what is in the best interest for the county. This isn't going to be some rogue organization. And I guess I just don't understand the point of setting up an organization if you're going to not let it do its job.
The main reason we're going with a board of health is because the other avenue takes too long. So Joe has proposed an amendment to the motion on the floor. Is there a second? And his was that this board of health would not have blanket authority to close businesses. For example, they cannot say all bars are closed. So that is a motion on the floor for amendment. Do I have a second to that?
I have a second.
And I have a second by Don. Further discussion on the amendment. Roll call vote on the amendment, which is essentially to amend their original motion, denying the authority to close businesses via blanket statement. Go ahead, Patty.
Healy?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Swenson?
No.
Close?
Yes.
Clemish?
No.
So the amendment passes, the original motion now includes the amendment. So now we take discussion back to the amended motion. Further discussion. So essentially, we have on the floor that we would create a county board of health, and their limited focus is COVID-19. Their term is set to expire June 4th, with the option for extension at the county commission meeting that day. They will follow the Sioux Falls guidelines as a guide, but they do not have the authority to blanketly close any business. Further discussion.
The city that has a medical board, where are the doctors from, the physicians, or those people at, it's just a question?
The city one- The city one, Dr. Milroy.
And where does she work, or?
She's from Yankton.
She's from Yankton.
I believe she's retired.
Oh, she's retired?
Yep, but she's from Yankton.
And she's the only doctor?
I believe so.
There's no nurses, or anybody on the paramedics, or?
Nope, I'm getting a head shake, no.
Just one doctor? I, that's kind of like one bid on a hundred thousand gallons of fuel, you know? I guess I'd like to see, I wish they had more. If we set it up, I would hope we'd have at least two or three, you know?
Well, under state law, the, it's the-
Be composed.
It's the Department of Health that names that doctor, so-
And so it's only one?
It's only one, yep.
It's kind of a bad time right now if they get-
It doesn't have to be a doctor.
It could be a nurse, or-
Yep.
Or a physician's assistant.
Yep.
It's a, it's a medical person.
Right now, it puts us in a bind like, say, that individual person got the flu. Anyway, you got to do.
Codified laws, county Board of Health composition. Each county may establish a county Board of Health, which shall be composed of the State's Attorney of the county, who shall be President of the Board, a physician, a physician assistant, or certified nurse practitioner who practices in the county, appointed by the Department of Health, who shall serve as Superintendent of the Board of Health, and one other resident of the county.
So it's just three people?
Three people. State's Attorney, a physician, nurse practitioner.
So it's two medical and one attorney?
Nope, nope. Physician or nurse practitioner, or-
Or.
A physician's assistant, and then one citizen. So three people on this board.
And the citizen could be a medical professional.
Could be, yeah.
Could be.
Absolutely.
I would volunteer to serve on that board, Madam Chairman.
I, I think that we will make that decision after we actually create the board, and we will probably nominate that person. So we need to discuss actually entertaining the motion on the floor first.
So, so what if, well, the Board of Health, like, says a blanket, we, we will shut down every business that doesn't comply with our rules? Apparently, they, they can't actually do that. What if, what if they say, we're going to shut, we, we will shut a business down because they're not, you know, following a 10-person rule? If they don't have blanket authority, how are they going to enact? I mean, and I, I remind you guys, this isn't, this isn't Riverboat Days, this isn't a party weekend. This is a worldwide crisis. This is an emergency. These guys need to act by tying their hands and tying their legs together. We're, we're decreasing their efficiency. So I guess I don't, how, how is it going to work if the Board of Health says no gatherings of 10 or more? We just said that they can't do any blanket decisions. Are they going to have to name all 50 businesses out there that-
They will not be able to close all bars, or all salons, or all specific types of businesses within the county. And I don't think, there was four people sitting here that said, "We do not want anybody to have that authority, and we do not wish to take that action." Four people have said that, sitting on this commission.
So the amendment essentially states they don't have blanket authority to close all bars or all hair salons. It does not say they don't have the authority to close a business who is continually violating what they're supposed to be.
What authority does this board have?
You left a loophole there with the continually violating. How many continuallys? One, two, three?
I have confidence that our State's Attorney is the President of this board, or will be, and that he will make the appropriate decisions.
How many, almost, you know, one, two, three, four?
And Gary, the board hasn't been established yet, but when the board is established, it's through the board.
You can give us some ballpark figures, can't you?
I, I don't have a ballpark.
Yeah, usual, that's usually the answer.
I do feel that a-
Comments like that, not acceptable.
Madam Chairman, I'd call a question.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Does anyone have a question about what the motion is? Or would you like me to restate the motion?
Please, please restate it for the public.
Okay, then we have a motion on the floor to create a county Board of Health that has a limited focus for COVID-19. Its term will run through June 1st of 2020.
Fourth.
Fourth, sorry, fourth, with extent, with the option to extend by the county commission at that meeting. They will model their guidelines after the Sioux Falls ordinance that was passed. And they do not have authority to blanketly close any type of business.
Now, I asked the Chairman to read that again because you made a mistake and you hesitated. Could you please read it one more time?
Certainly.
Madam Chairman, I also, and my, my main motion, I set in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law, 34-16-22.
All right, I'll be sure to, I, I, I have forgotten my shorthand in the last 35 years, so I, I'm using scribble. So please bear with me, I will try to do it again. The motion on the floor is for the creation of a county Board of Health per South Dakota Codified Law, 34-16-22. The focus will be limited on COVID-19. The term is good through June 4th of 2020, with the option to extend to a later date. Their focus will be modeled on the Sioux Falls ordinance recently passed around COVID-19. They do not have the blanket authority to close any style of business.
Thank you for reading that again.
Madam Chairman, that was most correct, except for one thing. You said it will be limited to COVID-19, and I said in my motion the focus will be COVID-19, so I think we need to make that clear.
Okay.
Focus will be COVID-19.
All right, the focus will be COVID-19. Strike the word limited. Any other corrections?
In our discussion, we clearly talked about exclusively or limited to COVID-19. So do we need to go through-
We did.
Amendment?
We did discuss that.
Are you making a, um, Dan's original-
That wasn't part of your motion, and we already voted on those.
No, it wasn't.
That was a different question.
It wasn't.
So we're going to, again?
Give me a second, Dan.
I called the question. I called the question, we need to vote.
Yep, but we all want to be clear exactly what we're voting on, and that's why we're taking our time, so give me a minute to make sure we're all clear. Now, your original motion, Dan, did not include the word exclusive, and it was not part of the amendment. So if we want to, I don't believe we can amend it at this time.
I, for discussion purposes, I am okay with the focused verbiage. I'm okay with the focused verbiage, I guess. Again, I have faith that our three-person board will act responsibly in our endeavor here.
Okay, everybody good to vote?
I guess with all the confusion, I hate to be on broken record, but I want you to read it again because everything got disrupted with the amendments, so now if you can read it all the way through, and then we can vote on it without any disruption, then maybe we can not read it the fourth time. Please, for the people at home.
Okay, because I'm sure I'll mess something up this time, too. Forgive me. The motion on the table is for the creation of a county Board of Health per South Dakota Codified Law, 34-16-22. Their focus is for COVID-19. Their term will expire June 4th, with the option to extend to a later date. Their focus is to follow the Sioux Falls, what's the name of it?
It's a long name. I think that was the name up top there.
The Sioux Falls ordinance dated, was it dated?
There was no date on that that I printed. So I would, I would call it the second-
This.
Second amended.
The Second Amended and Restated Regulations of the Board of Health relating to COVID-19. To be clear which ones those are. And they do not have the blanket authority to close any style of business. Are we good to vote? Roll call vote.
Now, these are the rec, the original motion by Dan, seconded by Gary.
Okay, should we maybe read that one again?
Amendment.
And with the amendment.
There, we want to read it again.
Okay. Are you okay with it, Dan?
The original motion amended by myself.
We already, we already made the motion to your amendment.
Yep, that got approved, so that becomes part of the original motion now.
Okay. Roll call, Bolton?
Yep, please.
Clemish?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Ketterine?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Loos?
Yes.
Thanks for rereading it, Sheri.
You're welcome. Sorry for all of the confusion.
Well, it's just, it's just troubling.
Yep, we'll help you with that. Back to our agenda. That was our Board of Health, so we finally finished number six. We have-
Sheri, you're going to, you're going to appoint number three.
Oh, yeah, now we should appoint before we move on. So, so we have a State's Attorney, which we're stuck with, sorry. And we'll have, who is contacting the Department of Health?
I will.
So you'll, you'll contact, so we need to decide on nominating a resident for this board.
I'd like to see-
Madam Chairman?
Just a mi-
I would volunteer to serve in this capacity.
All right, Don had the floor first. Go ahead.
I'd like to see somebody in the medical profession be the third person also.
And when Dan's finished, I'd like to make suggestions, too.
Well, Don, I think that's a good idea, but if, like you said earlier, our nurses and doctors and physicians are in high demand right now, and it, it, it would be another resident, uh, you know, I'm, I'm fine with somebody else doing it if they want to, but, you know, I guess, I can't imagine we'll have too many medical people with spare time on their hands.
I would, I think, look to within our own organization and somebody who's heavily involved in this, and I know Erin, um, with EMS would be a good candidate.
She would. She's a medical field for certain.
I'd like to see somebody from the outside.
She's involved in, in all of our task force calls. She's, has a medical background. She's an infection, came from an infection prevention background. I think that would be a, a good choice.
I agree.
And Dan, I, I know you'd like to-
I agree with that, but, but what happened, I mean, the emergency operation center is running full bore right now, and it might be running full bore for months yet. What happens, you know, if Paul gets sick, or Erin gets sick?
What if you get sick?
You know, I, I, I guess I hesitate to, to cut our emergency management department down in half. I think Erin would be a great choice, but, you know, maybe, maybe another person who's would be a better choice.
I appreciate that, that you want to be involved in this, I really do. I, I just don't feel that it's, somebody from the commission should be on that, on that board.
Sure, I, I understand. What about another office employee, maybe like somebody like that? An elected official like Brian Honoff, or somebody like that?
That'd be a good choice.
I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that Erin Hachusky be the third resident, or the, the resident on the county Board of Health.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to nominate Erin Hachusky to be the resident participant on the newly created County Board of Health. Further discussion?
I'm going to abstain. And you didn't, I didn't have to, I didn't know about it, so I couldn't tell you in advance.
Okay.
That you were going to nominate somebody.
Further discussion? We will take a roll call vote on this as well, except for Gary, who has abstained.
Healy?
Yes.
Ketterine?
Yes.
Clemish?
Yes.
Loos?
Erin has, has been nominated, so two of the three are identified. I think we're good to move to item 6A, which was added to the agenda, video conferencing equipment.
Madam Chairman, we ask take this item?
Go ahead.
Um, so, Madam Chairman, I took the initiative to work with Gary Vedder, and we realize that this may be a long-term solution, especially with the limited size of 10 people for our meetings. I feel it's necessary that we look at getting some video conferencing for future meetings put together, so I'm working on that. I don't have any bids yet, but it looked like it may cost, you know, a few thousand dollars. I, I don't know the number, but is it, would the commission be willing to, like, either give me the authority to get a video conference set up, or do we want to have a special meeting next week to approve it? I, I would like to have our video conferencing set up for our Sep, uh, our April 7th meeting, but the only way that'll happen to be, either if I have the ability to set that up, or we're going to have to have a special meeting, um, so.
I think depending on the-
Is Gary Vedder there? Is Gary Vedder there?
I think, depending on the dollar figure that comes in, this might be something that Gary can, can do.
Yeah, I, I think so, but just for transparency purposes, and for your guys' knowledge, I just wanted to let you know that I was working on it, and Mr. Vedder as well.
Right.
Okay.
I guess I would say if, if, Gary, if the vote comes in, send it for review. If it's a large dollar amount, we'll, we'll propose a special meeting, and if not, I would say move forward with it, because we are going to need to do-
What's a large dollar amount, over what number?
Over the amount to bid.
Over the amount to bid.
Right.
I'd like to add something. When you speak about Gary, could you say Gary Vedder?
Mr. Vedder, sorry, yeah.
Because we had three Garry's in a, in a grade school together, so they get confused with me.
A Joe, over what amount would you want us to come in for a special meeting? Would you comfortably?
What's your limit for authority? Patty?
Is it 25?
I believe so.
25,000.
I wouldn't think it'd be near that.
I would hope not.
No, it should be much, 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 okay, so, um, up till that amount, it might go over to have that set up for our, um, April 17th. Gary, did you have anything you want, or Gary Vedder, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that's it, and I, I guess our assumption is, is that, yeah, it should fall under the bid limit, so it's professional services, so we should be able to move forward.
Gary's, uh, did you hear him, Dan? Gary's good with, with moving forward.
Move forward.
Got an echo. All right, so if that is good, our next item is public comment. We're closing in on four hours.
I think, here it comes.
We have Fry listed, and Capri, and Gary Swet.
Come forward, please, thank you. You're, you're good, come on.
That mic's off.
Oh, mic's off.
Oh, just, there's a little button on the base. Yep, you're good, thank you.
All the technical things, I'm not good. As being the first proud person that was eliminated for the 10 people rule.
Thank you.
I was dinner, and after spending four hours of listening- I was, dinner, and after spending four hours of listening, the people that I've visited with, I had talked to some people the last few days and stuff, and they were really wondering what this medical thing was gonna be, this medical board, you know, and doing stuff. And I'm not sure, but it's apparently something that can be set up so that you can enforce laws that you couldn't enforce before, is my understanding, I might be wrong. And, uh, a lot of the people out in the county, especially in the north and east part, are really unhappy with how they're being treated or done, because they don't want somebody coming out, because there's small places, like little towns, where they like to conduct their business locally, where they do it properly, to their own, what they need, not what is good for out by the lake, or the other part, or for the city of Yankton. And that's just the feeling. And, uh, there's five townships that have shown interest in getting to form their own county, and there's two or three more that are very, very interested in it, too. And roads are a big problem. One of the main market roads coming in to Yankton was originally just gonna tear it up, because somebody on the board said, well, there's people from Clay County that drive on that road. Well, yeah, there's a lot of people from Wakanda, Irene, Gavio, Ballin, East of Town, that work here, so it's very important to them.
And why don't you, will you speak up, I can't hear you, thank you.
Uh, if I, can you hear me now? No?
Go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead.
Okay.
We'll do our best, Dan.
Because I, the last meeting I was to, it didn't work, didn't seem to work either. And from what I've seen, this board, this newly appointed board, is a way to work on things that are a problem, that you can't put people in jail, or find them, or shut things down. And it's, looks like it could end up throughout the country, and that's what a lot of people were worried about. And would like to see it, that it's not gonna be for a pandemic, it's gonna be to get rid of farmers, work on farmers, farm buildings, livestock, cattle, hogs. I am speaking up, and I won't yell any louder, because I came here to talk in front of it, in people here, which I thought this is where it was supposed to be. I didn't think it was supposed to be just on the air, and whatever, because that's the way I have been brought up, lived my life on this for seventy years, coming to these meetings, and I'm sure my three minutes are up. But, very carefully, I watch very, very carefully on those people and what they do, because they're supposed to be doing this for the pandemic, not to backdoor something in, to destroy farmers, because there's things that, out at the lake, are we gonna limit ten boats on the lake? Because that could be health spills. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public comment?
Am I up? Okay. It's not a comment, uh, this is a challenge to the ten percent of the Yankton people that are rich. It's step up to the plate, Yankton County. I want to go back a ways to nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty, September twenty-second, candidate John F. Kennedy was in Sioux Falls at the national plowing contest, my dad was there, too. He met with JFK as a candidate, and he listened to his speech, and he actually talked to him after a while, for about twenty minutes. What he was impressed by was the statement that he made, a farmer, the only man who buys retail and sells wholesale, and pays the freight both ways. Now, my dad was always a Republican, like my family was always a Republican, but he voted for him, because he thought that statement really hit the nail on the head. Now, John F. Kennedy donated his wages while he was in office, to charities, other groups, just like President Trump is doing. He just donated his to the virus, his last second, his third quarter. And I challenge all the bankers, the lawyers, the attorneys, the doctors, and all the rich people in Yankton, to step up to the plate. The Texas Roadhouse, the manager gave a month of his pay, so his employees could have money until his stimulus money, or whatever money it is. Another employer took out a fifty thousand dollar loan to keep his employees, so that they wouldn't look for other jobs until the money started flowing in, because as we all know, the government wheels turn, but they turn slowly. I already checked with the taxman, if you, rich people in Yankton County, want to donate, tax deduction, tax deductible to a government, which is a county, state, also charitable organization, is tax deductible. So, like Commissioner Clemish said, it's a life or death situation. All your big companies, great elevators, no matter what, doctors, lawyers, all these roads that people pass on, bridges that we have, that we need, need replaced, they travel on these roads and highways to get to Yankton. The commerce would slow down if we didn't have anything but gravel roads out there, or people stuck in the mud. So, the ten percent of Yankton County, step up to the plate, because you can deduct it for your taxes. And the only other last thing I'd like to say is that Sunday, the twenty-ninth of March, is Vietnam Veterans Day, please fly your flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a public comment?
I have a chair.
Yes, sir.
I guess more just a, um, a public comment. Specific to COVID-19, just to reiterate the, the importance, um, I know there's still people that, that feel this is not a big issue, and maybe not an issue in our community, but maybe it could be someday. The United States has now become the leading country in COVID-19 cases. This began in China, with over a billion people. They've managed to at least slow it down. Italy was looked to as, as running rampant. The United States is now, has more cases than those two countries. There was also something, Rapid City, I haven't heard any updates today, but there was, uh, potentially a hundred people exposed in Rapid City yesterday, and one mistake, one screw-up could, could be a big deal. Could be, mean one person being exposed versus hundreds, so please take this serious.
All right. Anything else?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, um, I would just like to thank all my fellow commissioners, and state attorneys, and auditors, is, uh, this was a decision that we never thought we would ever have to make, and, and I'm glad that, uh, in the end, we, we all agreed, and I want to be clear that I feel that we all love Yankton County, um, and that I think what we, the compromise solution here today, um, should show the community how much we care. But I just want to thank each and every one of you, um, for you, for today. Thank you.
All right, with that.
One more thing?
Mm-hmm.
Quote from John Kennedy, ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay, motion carries, we are adjourned, thank you, Dan.